To order the April 10th Board Meeting, can I get an approval of agenda?
I move we approve the agenda for the April 10th, 2024 Board Meeting.
A second. Jones?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Kadu Blackwood?
Yes.
Costello?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. The Board welcomes and thanks Kylie Luckett for filling in for Elise this evening. And we are now going to move into special recognition. And we will invite New York Elementary Showcase with Principal Halsted here to start the evening off.
All right, thank you very much. I just want to say in advance, the reschedule really messed up my recognition. So we have lots of people that couldn't be here, but we're still going to recognize them. So thank you for having us. My name is Sunny Halsted. I am the principal at New York. When I was asked to showcase New York, I thought about all the wonderful things that are happening, that our staff and our students are doing. But we would be here all night, and I'm sure nobody wants to do that. So I went around and asked my student leaders in the building and what kind of things they thought I should share tonight. The overwhelming theme came through that it's the support that we have with our business partners and our community members. So these are groups and individuals that are making an impact and difference every day for our students and staff. So I want to mention some of them. And then I want to talk a little bit more about our amazing buddy, Book Buddy program. So first, I'd like to recognize our Breakfast Optimist Club. This is a club that does amazing things for our school. They supply our food pantry, provide volunteers at our events, and host all of our school picnics at the end of the year, and list goes on and on. Connect Church is another partnership that is longstanding at New York. They spoil us so much. We know they are good for treats for events and staff whenever requested. They also provide many volunteers for any event that we have at New York. Elna or East Lawrence Neighborhood Association is another partnership that supports us in any way that they can. From including information in their newsletters, providing chili and desserts for our annual chili feed, to volunteering at all of our events. The Master Gardeners of Douglas County work with our Garden Club Weekly. David Payden sponsors our chess club and provides individual lessons to students. Mass Street Collective brings KU athletes into our school and reads to students, and has provided books for each student, and they're coming back next week, Dr. Lewis. KU Science Department provides engaging science lessons to our third graders. This year with our Character Strong assemblies, we've invited guest speakers. And some of those were Andrea Schaefer from Just Foods, Caleb Morris, a Site Council Chair, Caleb Locke, LHS Cheer Coach and his cheer squad, SRO Affalter, Free State High School Basketball Coach Summer Franz and her players. And we have more to come, the year's not over. So I could continue to talk, I have lots and lots of examples. We have so much support, but I really want to talk a little bit more about our Book Buddy program. So I researched this, it was in place before I came to New York. We reached out to Principal before me, Mrs. DeGarmo. She said it was in place before she got there. So what we found out is that it was started at East Heights. And when that school closed in about 2004, I believe, the students came over and the program came with it. So we're here two decades later, continuing this amazing program. Obviously, we had a little pause during the pandemic when we didn't have volunteers. But we are back in business, so we're really excited about it. Here's what happens, we get volunteers and they come in during the lunch hour. And they are partnered with a student. And the student about weekly will eat their lunch while the volunteer reads aloud to the student. And it is so, so popular, the kids love it. Some days, they ask every day, where's my buddy? And we say, he comes on Tuesday, today is Thursday. And then students who haven't been partnered with anyone yet ask, when am I going to get a buddy? So our volunteers come from the community, we welcome anyone. Anyone out there looking for a volunteer opportunity, it's pretty low risk and pretty high reward, so consider that. This year, we even have parents and grandparents of students, but they read to other students in the school. So it's just really, really a wonderful, wonderful program. So I brought some volunteers and their buddies are supposed to come, but there was a BGC basketball tournament at New York, so that could have a little impact. So I would like to recognize volunteer Ken, his buddy is Bodie. And then Linda Kucha is our parent involvement facilitator. And I want to recognize her, also my administrative assistant, Joy Krenzel. They are the brain behind this, they do all of the work, they find the volunteers, they check them in, they buddy them up. And they don't only do that for this program, but every volunteer opportunity, every donation, cookies, they organize everything. So they are amazing partnership, they work so well together, and I definitely couldn't do it all by myself. So even though we just have a couple people representing, it's an amazing program. We're really, really proud of it, and kids get so much out of it. So that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you to all the volunteers at New York Elementary for all the work that you're doing in supporting students. And we'll now ask Boys and Girls Club of Lawrence Youth of the Year to come up. I'm really excited about this, so Dr. Lewis?
Is Chris Jones here?
I don't think so.
No? Okay.
Hello, my name is Laron Williams. I go to Free State High School and I am a senior. I apologize for the casual wear, just came from club. I'm going to be giving my speech before accepting any questions our board members might have. I'm almost done. The high school senior in me wondering why my late game is so simplistic. Welcome to the big leagues, they say while patting me on my back as I walk by. And no, these aren't real people. It's just that same mental image that plagues my mind every time I think about adulthood. Besides, I can't really call myself a club kid anymore, my youth mostly ran away with innocence. But I have been molded bit by bit into someone that I can embrace, truly thanks to my club. It's no stretch directly assert any of this either. It's the truth evident to my family and my peers. You can call it modesty, but I refer to it as self-awareness. Because after all, I personally didn't get this far, it's as though I can do it all on my own. And so today, I can expressly accept my gratitude that I have as a seventeen-year-old who joined my club family at thirteen. The truth, and only the truth, will be told from this point on, out of respect for you all. A choice, my choice, defined those moments I spoke of, everything I've endured up to this very point. The True Boys and Girls Club experience isn't a casual walk in and out, nor is it even close to being a one and done. In fact, the internship opportunity that club offered me was definitely a necessary push towards that adult direction I envisioned. My internship happened last summer, so as one might have guessed, I had to pick between the reality of joining the workforce and the carefree innocence that came along with summer break. This conveniently led to me becoming a productive, caring, and responsible citizen. Surrounded by more than just respect, and smothered with genuine affection. It's always much more than self-serve community building. My work experience shared a commonality with all the youth I served, open arms. Now becoming a very mature, when I want to be, young man, whose compatibility is unmatched, earned me favor by default. I ended up losing during last year's local competition, yet still, here I am, giving another speech and thanks to the consistent empowerment from the Boys and Girls Club. However, being here today amounts to my warm, welcoming goodbye. Going towards a doorknob transition without a few words felt inappropriate, because I was taught to stand out and stand proud. As much as I wanted to include quite literally everything from my essays into this one speech, I guess we were just supposed to mean in a different way. Not going to turn this into a praise session, but I will say thank you. I am here because of you, and I am tenacious because of you, and I am Laron because of you. I'm a new me, a beginning after end. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jacory Taylor, I'm from New York Elementary School. BGC is special to me for many reasons. I get to see my friends and have a good time and do things for the community that I love, like making an art supply with Spark. I appreciate the opportunity to play summer flag football with four other friends that helped bring our team to the final two teams. We only have five players total, but we were still able to make it to the championship game. We were exhausted, but BGC staff and coaches pushed us to keep going. Another, another story that makes BGC great was when I was at, I was at Kennedy. I was running to the Kennedy door, I pushed the door open. The only thing I could remember was seeing Ms. Taylor and Ms. Elise running down the hallway to see what happened. That just shows how much staff care about me. While BGC has helped me during these last five and a half years, my family has been for, for me from day one, my mom, my dad, and my brother. Oh, and don't forget my two dogs that has played a big role as well. My mom and my dad are there for me when I need them in hard situat- in hard situations. My brother's there for me when I need him. He did Youth of the Year, so that's why I wanted to do Junior Youth of the Year. With that being said, thank you, family and BGC staff, for everything you've done for me. Again, my name is Jacory Taylor, see you later.
I want to say thank you again to Jacory and Laron for coming in here today to give their speeches. Laron was the winner of the Lawrence Youth of the Year for 2024. And he went on to compete in the Kansas Youth of the Year just last month. And he was the runner-up in that one, so again, congratulations, Laron, you did amazing. And then Jacory here, his little brother, he was the winner of the Lawrence Junior Youth of the Year. So, and again, congratulations to Jacory. Fun to be along on this journey with you guys.
New York W twenty-five to eight, New York Nation.
Hold on, hold on, come back, come back. I think our board members have questions?
So I was wondering if you could tell us a little bit about what this experience has meant for you and how you think it'll help you when you go on to your next step. You mentioned that you're looking at moving on past Lawrence Public Schools and Boys and Girls Club.
Yeah, so I'm not originally from Kansas, I was born in Minnesota, lived in Virginia for a while, and then I did come to Kansas eventually with my mom. She introduced me to Boys and Girls Club, actually, when I was in Central Middle School. At first, I was very reluctant, I doubted everything she said and how like, the like sheer amount of options they had, I wasn't sure. But like after trying it for myself and like seeing how much the staff member cared with like the variety of different options they offered for the programs that they usually do every day. And so being able to experience that helped me grow as a person. And it helped me realize that we do really have a strong sense of community and that I would like to participate in like any events that help us as a, together grow. And past public school, I intend to do journalism, I think. Yeah, I was told it wasn't like really what I thought it was, but I'm still going after it and I, I really do want to, because I like writing, not gonna lie, but yeah.
I can say your speech is really well-written, so I can understand that that's a passion for you, or at least I see it in what you shared with us and to mom and parents are here. So thank you and congratulations for bringing your kids, it's amazing. So other folks? Anything else?
Yeah, I would just, again, I don't know if there's a brother duo anywhere in the state or nation that have both won the youth, the Young Youth of the Year and the Youth of the Year? So you all may be a first. And as Laron shared, he was a participant in last year's Youth of the Year and didn't win, so he could have gave up. But you know someone was watching you, right?
Yep.
Standing right next to you, and you went after it again.
Yes, sir.
And look what happened.
That expired.
It did. Sky's the limit for both of you, and so you all be the Youth of the Year, the big Youth of the Year soon, Jacory.
Thank you.
All right, and mom, dad here, wave. Thanks so much for being here.
Thank you so much. I might need Jacory to stay and root us on for the rest of the meeting, but we'll, we'll move on to character strong leaders. Dina Johnston is here to help us, and Dr. Johnson and Kylie Luckett.
Good evening, thank you for having us here tonight. That's going to be a really hard act to follow, so, but I'll, we'll do our best. With the work at the foundation, we've been both blessed and blown away to be a part of an organization and witness the work that goes on within our schools and within our community, and to have the opportunity to meet so many amazing people along the way. Last year with the support of the generous community and donors, business partners, donations, in-kind gifts, and volunteer service through the Lawrence Schools Foundation, the Lawrence Education Achievement Partners enabled us to provide more than $1.5 million in direct support for academics, technology, athletics, the arts, and other student, staff, and school needs. But the work that we do through the foundation would certainly not be possible without the support and dedication of our lead partners. Tonight, we are pleased to introduce one of those partners to you, so if the Invista team would like to step, come up and join us. Tonight, we are pleased to introduce you to the Invista team, they're both from the Lawrence area and the Topeka community. Earlier this year, Invista Credit Union partnered with Kansas Athletics and the Lawrence Schools Foundation to help impact teachers and students from kindergarten to college. When KU wins, Invista gives, in which for every sport and every game that KU wins, Invista donated money to the Lawrence Schools Foundation. Their generous gift of $25,000 helped provide us with the funds to support third grade art stay, our August back-to-school new shoes for students and families in need, and to help support the Character Strong curriculum this year across the district. So we wanted to share with you as board members, as well as our partners with Invista, the incredible impact this program and their partnership has created among our students who are being recognized this evening. Before I turn it over to Dr. Johnson and Kylie to introduce these students, I wanted to allow Ron, the President and CEO of Invista, to introduce his team and share a few words. He's right behind me, so.
Nobody told me I was going to have to follow a couple of outstanding young speakers like that, but I guess it's too late to sneak out the back door, so I'll have to, I'll have to carry through. But good evening, I am Ron Smeltzer, President and CEO of Invista. You know, I've always believed that character and integrity form the foundation for virtually all positive attributes that we have as humans. And it can serve as a springboard to future success in life. So we are very pleased to have an opportunity tonight to recognize these outstanding young folks who are being acknowledged, and we're proud to be a part of that. One of Invista's core values is making an impact on the communities that we serve. And we take that responsibility very seriously. When we entered into our partnership with KU Athletics in 2022, our goal was to leverage that partnership into something impactful for the Lawrence community as a whole. And we were excited at the opportunity to use KU gives, or KU wins, Invista gives, they're not giving us anything, KU wins, Invista gives, to help fulfill some of the important needs that Lawrence Schools have. In 2023, the money we donated helped support a variety of things like the back-to-school shoe event, a third grade art program in, in connection with the LEED Center, and the Character Strong program that we recognize tonight. Invista set a goal of raising $25,000 through our KU partnership, but KU didn't win enough games this year, and we only raised $21,375. But we're going to honor our commitment tonight by presenting a check for $25,000 to the Lawrence Schools Foundation. And I want to thank you for letting us share in this outstanding program, and we look forward to our continuing support of Lawrence Schools. Thank you very much.
Good evening to everyone, it is an honor to be able to salute our character strong leaders and character strong champions from our school. Our champions are spread throughout our entire district, but tonight, we are going to honor and celebrate these twelve. Here we begin.
Can we call your name if you'll go ahead and come up here, please?
And can I ask if you would hold your applause to the very, very end? I know it's going to be hard, but hold your applause to the very end, and then we'll just have a celebration at the very, very end. The first student is Trey Wilson, eighth grader at Billy Mills Middle School. Trey is a high-character student who sets an example for what we want students at Billy Mills to be. He is kind and makes our school a better place.
Haven Littlehead, fifth grade, Cordley Elementary. Haven is a true leader by example and someone who consciously chooses to do the right thing all of the time. She's a true character strong champion in that she is driven not by compliance to the rules, but rather has a strong personal integrity and love and care for the people around her.
Skylar Payne, fourth grade, Deerfield Elementary. Skylar served on Deerfield Student Council in the fall. Skylar demonstrates the three Rs, respectful, responsible, and ready to learn on a consistent basis across all environments at school. She is kind, self-motivated, smart, funny, and a great friend to all. She has a natural curiosity about the world and the people in it. Out of the character traits we have learned so far, like kindness, perseverance, empathy, responsibility, Skylar is a steady example of all, of them all.
Levi Collins, fifth grade, Hillcrest Elementary. Levi is such a hard worker, he tries his very best in all subjects throughout the day. He is kind to his classmates and helps anyone in need. He is very polite and respectful at school. He is a good friend and helps everyone to feel included. He always offers to help teachers with extra work and is very responsible. Levi is a great student and a character strong champion.
Henry Kaufman, third grade, Langston Hughes. Henry is a student who encompasses all core values. Day in and day out, he is always willing to help a classmate or anyone in need. He is the perfect role model and the mentor for his peers. He ensures everyone is included, both in and out of the classroom. He loves to stay after school to help organize and clean up the classroom.
Lola Martin, senior Free State High School. Lola is an exceptional leader in and out of the classroom. She is a member of the Free State National Honor Society, the Free State Spirit Squad, and is a student leader in the intrapersonal skills class at Free State. She is a member of a studio competition dance team and belongs to the National Charity League, which is a mother-daughter volunteer organization.
Maya Worley, eighth grade, Liberty Memorial Central Middle School. Maya is an eighth-grade student who can always be counted on when we need something, whether it's, whether it be for a class project, to help a teacher, or to help other students, or for the school. She has excellent skills in getting along with others, working with people from a variety of backgrounds, and helping students navigate middle school successfully. We need you, Maya. I love it. Maya is kind and empathetic individual and really cares about her peers.
Ellie Osborne, second grade, New York Elementary. Ellie is a great leader at New York Elementary. She gives her best effort in everything that she does. Ellie demonstrates all of the character traits that we know are important to being a great friend and scholar. Ellie's greatest strength is that she is kind to everyone and meets, she meets and is respectful at all times.
Jackson Rainey, eighth grade, Southwest Middle School. With politeness and respect, he consistently uplifts his peers and fosters a culture of inclusivity and kindness. As a studious leader, he inspires others through his dedication to academic excellence and his willingness to guide fellow students towards success. Jackson Rainey truly exemplifies the essence of character-strong champion, embodying the qualities that define leadership and companion, compassion in our schools.
Cadence Daniels, fifth grade, Sunflower Elementary. Cadence is the definition of a leader in the classroom. She is kind, passionate, and loving to all around her. She sees the very best in everybody, including herself. She pushes herself when times get hard. She is an incredible young lady.
Baylin Garcia, fourth grade, Sunset Hill Elementary. Baylin is a true Sunset Hill Eagle who embodies the qualities of exceptional leadership and true character. Her influence on those around her is undeniably positive as she consistently demonstrates the character-strong traits both in and out of school. Baylin always treats her peers and teachers with respect, recognizing and appreciating their unique perspectives. With her strong sense of responsibility, she takes initiative and works with unwavering commitment.
Tia Cannaday, eighth grade, West Middle School. Tia exemplifies each and every one of the character-strong core values of patience, kindness, honesty, respect, selflessness, forgiveness, commitment, and humility. Tia is an outstanding student that cares deeply for her education and her peers. She is a quiet leader who sets the example of being a stellar individual by strongly following the three Rs in our building.
Last but certainly not least, please welcome Jamir Tanner, third grade, Woodlawn Elementary. Jamir's exceptional emotional intelligence and genuine interest in learning set him apart. Jamir stands out for his ability to understand and appreciate different perspectives, fostering inclusivity in the classroom. Despite his young age, he's known for his positive attitude and genuine care for his classmates. Please, let's give all of our character-strong leadership a round of applause.
Please stay tuned for next month's meeting. We will share, or the next, the next meeting in two weeks, we will share details about our one-year update regarding Character Strong. So get ready, get ready, get ready. Thank you.
Thank you all for everything that you've done in your schools and the character, the strength of your character that you've shown and the parents that helped instill that in them. Thank you for coming tonight, and we're really proud. Thank you. And I think the folks from Invista are walking, oh, they, thank you very much for helping us do this and for being a part of it and being the kind of community partners that we hope we see in others. Really appreciate it. Thank you so much. Okay, we're gonna move on to recognize retirements.
Okay, we'd like to celebrate the retirement of two people tonight. First is Patricia Curtell. We'd like to thank her for her 25 years of service and devotion to her community and its schools. We'd also like to thank and recognize Elizabeth Gaines for her 45 years of service and dedication to the community and its schools.
Thank you. Okay, we now have the pleasure to welcome Lawrence Virtual Schools students who are going to provide us a presentation on a project that they've done that will inform some of the work we do here in the district, but we're gonna give it just a minute while folks are exiting, if that's okay, Principal Harwood. So do we know if everybody's online? Kylie can hear us? Dr. Harwood, would you like to join us? So we have Principal Harwood here from Lawrence Virtual Schools, and I'm gonna leave to you to introduce your students, if that's okay.
So we have the work of three incredibly young scientists. They've been doing a lot of work around AI, looking at both public perception of it as well as doing some really, I think, impressive scientific work testing it. And so I just wanna, it is Daniel Dow, Lawrence Dow, Indian Pracht. They are, they've been working with Ms. Nancy Jackson on an e-cyber mission project, and I want to thank them first for their leadership on this issue, because it's something I think impacts all of us, and I'm incredibly excited for you to see what they've been working on.
All right, Nancy, you should be able to unmute and let us, or go ahead and start.
Right. Do you all have the PowerPoint presentation that the boys are going to be working from?
We do.
Yes, we do.
All right. I believe Daniel's gonna start.
Could you please show, um, share the presentation on the screen in the meeting? Thank you. Um, good evening, everyone. How are you all doing today?
Hey, Daniel, we're working on the volume here. Just one moment.
All right, Daniel, try that again.
Good evening. How are you all doing today?
Great.
Fantastic.
I would like to thank you all for helping us today and allowing us to present it. The title of our presentation is "Embrace It, Educate With It, Don't Eliminate." The items on our agenda are going to be introduction, status quo, survey results, or experiment results, and do's and don'ts, and found takeaways, and finally, a Q and A session. Our team has three members, Daniel, Ian, and Lawrence. The community issue we decided to tackle for our project is the absence of discussion, education, and support concerning AI tools such as ChatGPT in our community. The goal of our project is to raise awareness about this issue, to share knowledge, and offer suggestions to address the issue in our community. The focuses of our project are two. One, gain insights into our community's perception of generative AI and ChatGPT, and understand our community's level of interest in the issue. To accomplish this, we create surveys to delve deeper into the topic. Secondly, to evaluate ChatGPT's reasoning capabilities in a scientific way, by experiencing firsthand what the tool could do by using it. We conducted experiments on ChatGPT, testing the tools mathematically. We chose math because it's our team members' favorite subject, and it's easier to validate than other subjects. So we have, next, we have some background information on our project. We use ChatGPT 3.5, a generative AI tool released to the world on November 30th, 2022. It can generate human-like conversations from simple user prompts. It supports 50 languages, has hundreds of millions of subscribers worldwide. Our district, LVS 497, has access to ChatGPT on district-issued iPads for both teachers and students. No formal discussion and guidance on the topic of AI literacy, generative AI technology, its tools, in our district. Additionally, the Kansas Board of Education hasn't issued no guidance on the topics so far. Now, we're going to look at our survey results. We surveyed four groups of stakeholders in our community to gain insights into how they perceive generative AI technology and ChatGPT. The surveys are online using Google Photos. Participants were sent links to surveys via email. It was voluntary participation, and we offered no incentives. There were eight questions on the surveys, and we had 159 respondents, or a 40% response rate. The four groups in our, the four groups we surveyed are LVS middle school students, LVS middle school parents, LVS teachers, USD 497 teachers. I need you to see the name. For question, for the first question, we asked the participants, how familiar are they with the artificial intelligence technology ChatGPT? The USD 497 teacher group showed the highest level of familiarity compared to other groups. 32% interviewed were moderately familiar, very familiar, and extremely familiar categories. The second question, we asked the participants whether or not they have used the ChatGPT AI platform. The USD 497 teacher group reported a 71% response rate for yes, which is the highest among the groups. This was followed by the LVS teacher group, 60%. Now, I'm going to hand it over to Ian.
All right. My name is Ian Platt, and I'm going to continue talking about our survey results, because there's a lot of it. So on question four, we asked about the positive benefits of ChatGPT and similar AI tools in school environments. For the LVS middle school students, they, our top three were homework assistance, writing, and learning tools such as assistance in coding and math. All groups agreed that ChatGPT can benefit students most in writing, like editing tools and learning. Question five was sort of the opposite question. In what ways do you think that ChatGPT and AI tools would negatively impact students in school environments? So student and parent groups were mostly concerned that students would become overly reliant on ChatGPT, and it could lead to cheating in school. Teacher groups also were concerned that students may become too dependent on ChatGPT, and that students may use these tools to cheat. And they were also concerned that students could receive inaccurate or biased information from the tools. Question six was a question about how should school systems respond to the use of ChatGPT and similar AI tools? So all of the groups agreed that schools need to educate and hold discussions about the pros and cons of these tools and how to use them properly, and how to update their academic integrity policy and rethink assignments. A third of the LVS parent group thought that ChatGPT should be banned. This is the highest among these four groups. And the LVS student groups showed the highest response rate for the option of allowing students to have access to ChatGPT in schools. Question seven was a question about agreement or disagreement with the following statement. There was a gray area of I don't know. So we asked if they agreed or disagreed with the following sentence, which is, should ChatGPT be allowed in schools? 60% of the LVS students said yes. 50% of the LVS teachers said that they did not know. 50%, sorry, 56% of the USC 49, USC 497 teachers agreed, and 59% of the LVS parents did not agree. Keep in mind that these are the highest percentages of choices from each group. In total, if you look at all of these, 54% agreed that ChatGPT should be allowed in schools. 29% did not know, and 17% disagreed. Uh, question eight was a optional question. However, we did get many responses. Um, this is an open-ended question that asks if anyone had any other opinions on ChatGPT. Students mostly appeared to be the ones interested in ChatGPT, and also pointed out that it is an enemy tool and should not be fully relied on for schoolwork. Parents agreed that educating students on ChatGPT is essential for proper use. Teachers agreed education was necessary and compared AI tools to when the internet was first introduced to schools and how people were at first resentful to that until it was, until it was integrated into the school system. All groups realized that ChatGPT is a powerful tool and that education about how to properly use it is vital. The teachers said that if one is familiar with ChatGPT, they will more likely agree to have it in schools, and they offered more insights. Other platforms were also mentioned, such as Google's Bard, and there were more concerns about the reliability of how these AI tools are trained with information on the internet and not fully understanding the consequences. Overall, there was a lot of interest, though, in ChatGPT in schools. Now we get into the experiment results. We We asked questions. We asked questions. We asked questions um, to the ChatGPT three point five version. And these are the results that we got. So, the first off, experiments set up. There were three data sets. The first one was three randomly selected problems um, and three different math concepts published by the New York State Education Department for Grade Eight Mathematical Assessment from twenty twenty one to twenty twenty three. Our second data set was thirty randomly selected problems and five different math concepts by the College Board and their May thirtieth, twenty twenty three SAT practice tests. And the third data set was thirty more randomly selected problems and five math concepts ranging from easy to hard easy to hard published by The Art of Problem Solving in a book called Competition Math for Middle School by author Jay Batterson in August of two thousand and nine. There were two testers, that would be Daniel and Lawrence, and they had different user accounts, and five experiments, each on different dates and times, followed identical procedures. There were two prompts for each problem. Prompt one asked the ChatGPT to solve this problem and provide the answer. Prompt two was a little different. It asked them to solve this problem and show how they did it step by step. The process was to manually enter two, these two types of prompts into ChatGPT's message box for each problem. One hundred eighty prompts among both testers was taken for each experiment, so nine hundred prompts for each tester total, or a total of eighteen hundred prompts. And these were all recorded on a tracking sheet. And with that, I will pass it to Lawrence.
So. The goals of our experiment were to test how the accuracy of the generated responses by ChatGPT changes when data sets, user counts, prompts, and experiment times are altered, and to also test how reliable the tool is. Um, this is our experiment results. Both of our testers recorded the average accuracy score by ChatGPT for five experiments in the charts below. As you can see, for the data set state assessment eighth grade, tester two point two had a ninety-four point seven percent average accuracy score and answered twenty-eight point four out of thirty questions correctly. For data set two, College Board SAT Practice Test, tester two point two answered ninety-one point three percent, had a ninety-one point three percent average accuracy score, and answered twenty-seven point four questions out of thirty questions correctly. For our last data set, Auto-Prompt Solving Middle School Competition Problems, tester two point two had a fifty-six percent average accuracy score and answered sixteen point eight out of thirty questions correct. For our experiment findings, ChatGPT can generate responses to prompts within a few seconds. It had consistent performance throughout the experiment. We experienced an instance where ChatGPT encountered errors and was unable to produce a solution. It can also produce elaborate responses with step-by-step reasoning for the problems we tested. It performed very well for state assessment and College Board SAT data sets. Responses with the same level of accuracy can vary in length, the amount of text, and structure. These are experiment findings, too. For some questions, ChatGPT generated completely different responses for the prompts and for the testers. If ChatGPT does not know how to answer a question, it can create or make up varying answers for the same user on different dates. These, this term is called, this AI terms is called hallucinations. Some questions require specific approaches to resolve. ChatGPT struggled with these kinds of problems. Its responses were error incorrect throughout the experiment. It can also make simple calculation mistakes or generate nonsensical responses. Sometimes, if it does not understand the question, asking for a four-digit number returning a three-digit number. Other things we learned. ChatGPT is a giant artificial neural network with about one hundred seventy-five billion connections, which are mathematical functions with billions of terms. ChatGPT was trained using three hundred billion words or five hundred seventy gigabytes of data. The US, the, the US Department of Education issued a book called Artificial Intelligence and the Future of Teaching and Learning: Insights and Recommendations in May twenty twenty three to provide leadership on the topic. Out of all fifty-one state departments of education, just two states, California and Oregon, have offered official guidance to school districts on using AI in schools in twenty twenty three. Other things we learned. On December twelfth, twenty twenty two, the Los Angeles Unified School District, they blocked ChatGPT on school wifi and district-owned student devices. On, on, on October twelfth, twenty twenty three, the Los Angeles Unified School District announced that all students ages thirteen and above would have access to generative AI tools. New York City Public Schools banned ChatGPT on January through twenty twenty three due to concerns of cheating. However, on May eighteen, twenty twenty three, New York City's Department of Education un-banned ChatGPT and outlined the school system's plans to engage with ChatGPT. Other things we learned. Wichita Public Schools, a fifty thousand student district in Kansas, embraced ChatGPT soon after it was introduced. In April twenty twenty three, the entire faculty and staff of the district were given access to ChatGPT, then participated in a district-wide summer ChatGPT camp to understand the chatbot and its use in classrooms. Lavenworth Public Schools' USD four five three became the first district in Kansas to embrace magic school AI innovators, a generative AI platform designed to support teachers within its community. We had an interview with Mr. Potter, Director of Public Relations, and he offered us insights into the implementation of the AI platform in this district. If you want to, if you want to know more about the interview, we can send you after the presentation is over. A survey conducted by Lindenwood University in September twenty twenty three of four thousand five hundred twenty-eight K to twelve educators across fifty states in Puerto Rico highlighted several obstacles hindering the integration of AI technologies in schools. Among these, the necessity to provide educators with sufficient training and support, including remedies to their knowledge gaps emerged as a prominent barrier. Educators expressed concerns regarding time and costs associated with AI implementation in classrooms alongside the access of essential resources like dependable high-speed internet and hardware. Other things we learned. Four large-scale studies have been conducted on the topic. The first survey by study.com surveyed two hundred thirty K to twelve teachers about the use of ChatGPT in February twenty twenty three. Eighty percent of teachers have heard of ChatGPT. Seventy-two percent of teachers have not received any faculty guidance on ChatGPT, and sixty-seven percent of teachers do not believe ChatGPT should be banned in schools. The second survey by Pew Research Center in September twenty twenty three surveyed one thousand four hundred fifty-three US teams aged thirteen to seventeen about the use of ChatGPT for schoolwork. Seventy-five percent of surveyed US teams say they have heard of ChatGPT, including twenty-three percent who have heard a lot about it. Sixty-nine percent of respondents say it is acceptable to use ChatGPT for researching new ideas. The third study by intelligent.com surveyed three thousand seventeen high school and college students in ages ranged sixteen to twenty-four, along with three thousand two hundred thirty-four parents of younger students in May twenty twenty three. Eighty-five percent of high school and college students surveyed say studying with ChatGPT is more effective than studying with a tutor. Ninety-five percent of students and parents of students surveyed say their grades have gotten better since they or their children started studying with ChatGPT. The last survey jointly conducted by Impact Research and Walton Family Foundation. A survey of one thousand two US K to twelve teachers and one thousand US students aged twelve to seventeen in February twenty twenty three, and about how they use ChatGPT in schools. Fifty-one percent of teachers reported using ChatGPT, with forty percent using it at least once a week, and fifty-three percent expecting to use it more this year. Here's a list of do's and don'ts in ChatGPT that we compiled during our research. These are just some suggestions, and they are not exhaustive lists. You should use it as a learning partner for ideas. Use it to design a study plan. Use it to help understand basic concepts. Use it to understand your problems and steps. Use it to review your lessons. Use it to learn a new language. Use it to learn coding. Provide with a clear prompts. Play word games, trivia games with it. Explore with it, for example, creative storytelling or photography. You should not use it to cheat. Don't use it to do your homework, such as writing assignments. Don't rely on it for making decisions. Don't share with it your personal or sensitive information. Don't share with it other people's private information. Don't blindly trust everything it generates. Don't share with it your original critical. Don't use it as a therapist. Don't use it for legal or medical advice. Don't forget about copyright laws, for example, ask for sources. Here are takeaways. If you want to learn more on this topic, you can read extensively about the topics, generative AI, its tools. You can watch documentaries about the topics. You can talk with others about the topics. You can reach out to us for more conversations. You can experiment with ChatGPT and other tools, and you can explore emerging careers with generative AI. Here's how you can advocate for change in our community. You can engage in conversations. Call or write to our district IT director to remove restrictions on AI tools. Call or write to our local school administrators or state administrators to request guidance on AI technology in schools. Request AI literacy to be included in the local and state curriculum. Thank you for taking your time to listen to our presentation. If you have any questions, we will answer them now.
First, I want to say, holy smokes, you did a lit review, interviewed district staff. There was a very comprehensive and well-executed survey. The information you provided is useful in many ways to decisions we would make as a board, including policy, and also procedures and policies we might put in place for both student, staff, and district leadership. You've given me so much to think about, I'm not even sure where to start. So, thank you very much for the presentation. I'm definitely going to reach back out to you all for additional conversation. I think the policy committee has much to consider under this issue. And now, I will pause and open it up for questions.
First, I want to say, fantastic work. This is extremely helpful. When I was reviewing your results in preparation for tonight's meeting, one thing that I noticed in the survey results about whether student, staff, parents thought that we should use ChatGPT. There were some results in there that were surprising to me. So, I wanted to ask you if you were surprised by any of the particular results that you got from your survey. Did you have expectations that it would turn out one way or the other with any particular group? And, and did any of it surprise you? And then, after you answer the question, I'll tell you which one surprised me.
Well, I think that I assume the teachers would be flexible with whichever way it would go. Like, well, that, but it would be, they would be flexible, like, maybe a little split. And then, with students, I think that, I assume that they would go toward the allow ChatGPT in school side. And most of the outcomes didn't really surprise me that much. Except the parents, because.
Perhaps what interested me the most was that the students seemed to be the most, almost the most educated, right up there next to the teachers, who have been to those kinds of workshops, like Lawrence mentioned. And, you know, they were they seemed like they were more open to ChatGPT than the parents were. I'm not sure if that is because there's less education, or if it's just a concern from the parents that they want their kids to do well in school, which is a valid concern.
Well, my parents only had twenty-four people, though, as respondents out of, um, out of eighty-six people. So, it was about only twenty-eight percent of respondents from the parents. But, and it's it's the lowest response rate in our, like, presentation. I mean, in our survey results, it was not surprising to me. Well.
Great. Well, I really appreciate your reflections on that. I will tell you, I was, I expected when I, when I was reading your questions that the students would be the most enthusiastic about allowing access. And I was surprised when the results were that the teachers were even more open to that possibility. And given that, that this is not a tool that we make available, I think that gives our policy committee a lot of interesting data to consider as we talk about whether we need to adopt policy. And it's my belief that we do, as a district, need to adopt policy around this. So, thank you again for your great work.
Yeah, and I think the policy extends into academic integrity policy. Absolutely agreed with that point. And then, also, just the utilization. And you've given us good districts to look at models. I appreciate that. Other, I, go ahead.
Okay. Amazing job. I myself am still in the very early stages of learning about this. One of the things at the conference I just attended was talking about the importance of prompt writing and prompt engineers as a career. They can make like three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars because it's such, like, there are so few people that can do it well. So, I thought that was interesting. And obviously, perhaps a need that we need to add into the curricula as well as far as teaching students how to use this. What would you, do you have any recommendations about the use of AI in our schools? Based off what you've learned?
Um, I think we should definitely develop a task force, including all stakeholders that we surveyed, and discuss the matter. We also need to develop guidelines onto how to use it appropriately, and how to use it responsibly. We also need to train the teachers, because if we train the teachers, then students can fail that.
As far as using it in school goes, it's very useful for things like coding. I've personally used it for my own coding projects before, and it's very helpful in that way. And as technology improves and progresses, I'm beginning to think that coding classes are going to become more of a necessity in schools, and ChatGPT and other things like that could be a very useful tool for those kinds of things.
GR, did you have?
Yeah, um, I'll just really quick echo what everybody says. It was a great presentation. I liked, I like what you said there at the end. Um, I liked, I like what you said there at the end about, you know, making sure that we get, as we work on policy and as, as, as we work on doing this, getting stakeholders to the table and, and making sure that we have some policies in place, we have some guidelines in place, both for staff and for students. You know, I don't, I don't, I don't, I, I don't believe you're, you're advocating for us to flip, flip the switch to turn it on tonight. Um, but I think, I, I think you gave us a lot of things to think about to, to, to lead us down that path. I think it's the right path. Um, I, I for one have been using ChatGPT for a very long time. I use Copilot every day um, uh, in VS Code. Uh, so it's something I'm quite familiar with. I'm quite familiar with the benefits and, and, and how to use it effectively and appropriately. And, and, and so I think, I think a lot of things that you brought up today, um, the things that you learned through your experimentation, the, the points that, that, that you were able to bring to the table, uh, as Kelly said, were all very thorough and organized and um, and, and really laid um, some really great foundation for us to move forward from. So, great work and thank you for, for bringing it to us and taking the time and coming, it's really awesome.
Thank you again for your time and your interest.
Well, uh, this is Carol, I just want to thank you for bringing this um, to us for our attention. And I just wanted to, I don't, I'm sure you are aware of this, but the Penantia School District in Washington State was one of the first schools to put out guidance on using artificial intelligence in the classroom. And the, the school actually used AI, they actually used GPT Chat to develop their policy. And we will take this into consideration and consider, look at the um, Department of Education's Guidance for Artificial Intelligence and Creating Policy. And on the, in the back of the report, there are seven key recommendations, and I'll forward you all the report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, again, I thank you all for this um, report. I agree with Kelly, you really laid this out in a way that's almost like a dissertation. I was about to, ready to ask you, did you go, did this go through IRB? Um, but you also, you did a, did a great job. And our job as, as educators and as a school system uh, is to prepare today's students for your future, for their future. Not necessarily our, our past. And so part of that is looking at this from a policy standpoint, from a practices standpoint, which those policies and practice should be in place to teach our students to be discerning consumers and producers of AI-generated content. And so uh, it's not going anywhere, and we, as a school system, we have to embrace it. And I was reading something recently that if school systems are not talking about AI today, they're not preparing their students for their future. We've been having some conversations uh, in ELT about it as well. Obviously, there's generative AI, which you talked about tonight, but also school systems can use predictive AI that will um, uh, help us in terms of predicting students' outcomes based, based on, you know, data, uh, in terms of graduation and other things. So um, I'm happy to, that our board is considering um, adopting policy around this.
I would, I guess I would ask ELT in part of your conversation, I do like this idea of a task force. I don't know that we've used that word before, but I think that's, that's a good idea in terms of um, bringing together stakeholders. So I appreciate that recommendation, and I think that's probably something we can put together.
Yeah, I think we probably have some members of the task force on, on the screen. Uh, Gwinnett County School District actually established a, an office in their school district, Office of Artificial Intelligence. Um, that's just how serious school districts are getting about this.
Um, thank you so much for giving us your time tonight. Uh, and to Ms. Jackson, you've been quiet, but we appreciate the guidance that you've provided your students and the mentorship and the educating you've done so that they could put this together for us. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Done, y'all, really, good job.
Thank you.
So you'll be hearing from us. We appreciate it, thank you. Principal Harwood. All right, we're gonna um, recess to executive session. Can I get a motion?
I move the Board of Education recess to executive session to protect the public interest in negotiating a fair and equitable contract to, to discuss negotiations pursuant to the exception for employer employee negotiations under coma. With Dr. Anthony Lewis, Cindy Frick, Dr. Cynthia Johnson, Kristen Ryan, Dr. Larry Inglebrick, and Kevin Harrell invited to be present and with the board to return to open session at seven thirty with no action to follow.
Sir Second?
Second.
Jones?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Kudoo Blackwood?
Yes.
Costello?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
And we'll turn to open session. Moving on to report of the superintendent of schools.
Thank you, President Jones. Good evening, board members, members of the public in attendance and online. Happy to share that this year's MOU with the LEA regarding our middle school schedule has sunset, and as a result, the district will return to the current language, and the current language that's in the negotiated agreement with middle school educators teaching six of eight periods. I certainly appreciate the certified negotiations team for its ongoing efforts and discussions of how to best serve our students and improve working conditions for our staff, considering the limited funds available to our district. Last night was our final, or the board's final beyond the boardroom of this school year, and so many thanks to the board members and the members of the public, including students that came out to have conversation with our board members. Also, thanks to board past president Shannon Kimball and Lawrence Schools Foundation Executive Director Dina Johnston for sharing updates about Lawrence Public Schools and the foundation at the Chamber's Government and Community Affairs luncheon today. Several scholar honors to let you know about. KENEA awarded top honors this past weekend to Lawrence Highs Junior Adele Erickson in its Student Expression Campaign. It encourages young creators to speak their truth on social justice through visual arts, music, spoken word, and video or photography. Adele spoke and was honored at the KENEA Delegate Assembly in Wichita. Her artwork, which speaks to the sexualization of women in the media, get this, it will be reproduced on a grand scale and displayed on the side of the KNA headquarters building in Topeka for next year. So that's literally a huge honor. Her artwork will be displayed on side of a building. Free State is celebrating a second speech and debate team member junior Anwin Williams, I hope I pronounced your first name correctly, earning premier distinction, the highest degree in the National Speech and Debate Association Honors Society. This is certainly no easy feat. Fewer than three percent of its members achieve this level prior to graduation. Many of you may recall Senior Sophie Racy earned premier distinction in December. So this is certainly a true testament to Mr. Kelly Thompson's expertise as a speech and debates coach at Free State. Speaking of Firebird's debate, three Free State alumni who are now attending KU have been in the news this week. Congratulations to Cecilia Cece Porengathy, named the 2024 National Goldwater Scholar. She's a junior studying inorganic chemistry at KU with a goal of improving the efficiency of sustainable sources of energy. KU debate team member John Marshall, a Free State class of 2022 member, was the member of the team placing fifth at the National Debate Tournament. Marshall was ranked the 18th individual speaker nationally, and he and his teammate were the eighth-ranked team in the country entering the tournament. They made it to the quarterfinals, where they met and were replaced by high-seeded KU's team that went on to finish second in the nation. In addition, the KU debate team that included Jacob Wilkins of Free State's class of 2021 finished four of four in national preliminary rounds. Certainly always gratifying to see and to hear about the many things that our scholars are doing as they continue their college success. Past president Shannon Kimball and board member G.R. Goran Ross presented information about the district's launch of its private fiber wide-area network during last week's National School Board Association Conference in New Orleans. In addition to sharing their experience with other school districts, their presentation was featured in an article on GovTech.com, an online magazine covering information technology's role in the state and local government. So thank you Shannon and GR for sharing the work that we're doing here nationally. Our district's elementary students have checked out a whopping 108,747 books from their school libraries through the third quarter of this year. Those numbers are thanks in no small part to the phenomenal people working in our libraries. And so this week, we asked you to help us celebrate all of our library media specialists and assistants during National Library Week and National Library Month. Thank you for always being advocates for education and for cultivating skills that benefit students for the rest of their lives. Congratulations to Kristen Oswald, Swegler's third grade teacher, and Lori Byers, Billy Mills Middle School gifted education teacher. They are our nominees for the Kansas Teacher of the Year program. They were both honored Sunday at the state's Region Two Awards banquet in Topeka. There on the screen is Kristen Oswald with our commissioner and some other folks there, and Lori Byers. So congratulations to our two outstanding Kansas Teacher of the Year nominees. We are pleased to join Billam Mills Middle School in celebrating the selection of Sarah Reichenberger Murray as Assistant Principal and Athletic Director effective July 1, pending board approval. Sarah is a Lawrence resident and currently the Director of Field Experiences and KU School of Education and Human Sciences. She's been there since 2022, and previously served our district as a curriculum and instructional coach for four years. So welcome back, Sarah Murray. We actually had a lot of applicants, we had close to 30 applicants for some of these vice principal positions, so a lot of interest in those positions. Last week, we celebrated National Assistant Principals Week. These dedicated educational leaders work tirelessly to support principals, teachers, and staff, students, and school families. They build relationships, help create safe, positive learning environments, oversee athletics, activities, and facilities, and face many, many, many unpredictable challenges. So thank you so much to our associate and assistant principals. April 3rd was paraprofessional appreciation day, and this is a day that honors our paraprofessional educators, and so we're certainly thankful for our 235 paraeducators, most of which support students receiving special education. And so on the screen there, we're working with Lawrence, I'm sorry, we're working with Langston Hughes Elementary to recognize paraeducator and lunch monitor Stephanie Moore. Stephanie's quick and effective action last week assisted a student who was choking during lunch. The student fully recovered, and we are so grateful that Stephanie was there, just being there at the right time to provide support to that student. Speaking of pairs, continuing to celebrate our pairs, many thanks to the Lawrence Schools Foundation for honoring Marie Daniels, a paraeducator and job coach at Community Connections at Pinckney with the $500 Spring Acknowledging Classified Employees, or ACE, award last week. Marie is well-deserving of this recognition. Speaking of Community Connections, our C-Trans students from Community Connections at Pinckney are Job Olympics champions. They won the post-secondary division of the Job Olympics at Johnson County Community College. These competitions test job and employability skills, and we are so, so proud of them and have invited these champs at our first board meeting in May to be recognized. And thanks to Jackson Caldwell for letting me know as soon as it happened. Speaking of Jackson, thank you to KU baseball for hosting C-Trans students Jackson and Tavoris. They were honorary managers at the KU's baseball annual autism awareness game that was last Saturday. I want to thank Midco for donating close to, I think, over 4,000 pairs of safety glasses to assist us in our efforts to participate in Monday's solar eclipse. I also appreciate all of our teachers, staff, and administrators for organizing lessons around viewing the eclipse and for providing alternative activities for students whose families and cultures do not choose to participate. Lawrence Public Schools actually rolled in deep to Emporia State University to attend the Kansas Master Teacher Day ceremonies at Emporia last week to honor Kansas Master Teacher Jess Brown of Sunflower. She's Sunflower first grade teacher, and it was certainly a joy and an honor to be there as we celebrated Jess as the Kansas Master Teacher. While many of our students enjoyed spring break, our FNO maintenance staff used their time to complete some major projects throughout the district. They installed a new PTA-funded playground structure and replaced a kitchen grease trap plumbing receptacle at Langston Hughes. They replaced the chiller at Woodlawn and a rooftop HVAC unit at Sunset Hill. FNO staff installed new softball turf and batting cages at LHS and added acoustic sound-reducing paneling, and repaired custodial floor mop sinks at West Middle School. At the ESC, new cabinetry shelving and office furniture were installed in the audiology office. In addition, what you see on your screen is solar panels were installed on the roof at Prairie Park for the district's first solar energy education project, so that is hugely exciting. And remember, this came as a result of our futures planning process. This was a recommendation from the Futures Planning Committee, and so we certainly look forward to the educational and environmental benefits of this project, as well as generating cost savings for the district's general fund. As a reminder, new student registration for the 24-25 school year is open, as well as the transfer requests. You can find that link on your screen there at new student registration, and for transfers it's usd497.org/transfers. Also, the annual student registration for all returning students will open April, or is open, it opened April 1st, so please make sure our parents complete those. I completed mine last night, so my son was encouraging me to complete it because they received a little squishy toy after completing. So hey, whatever it takes to get families to complete it. So thank you to families that have completed that. Once again, our friends at Cans for Community are back with an annual April Can Challenge. Help them recycle 5,000 pounds of aluminum cans this month with proceeds supporting our middle and high schools. You can drop off your cans at the blue cans that are housed, I'm sorry, blue can houses located in the parking lots of grocery stores and other businesses around Lawrence. Finally, here are a couple of calendar reminders for school families. As a reminder, there's no school for students in grades early childhood through 12, that'll be Friday, and it is also Staff Professional Learning and Planning Day. Please remember, though, that all of our schools are in session on Monday. And my final plug for Big Brothers, Big Sisters, partners, you will see this at every board meeting, so until you scan the QR code, you're gonna see it. So again, we encourage all members of our community to take an active part in the life of a child by serving as a mentor with our partnership with Big Brothers, Big Sisters. That's all I have.
So we'll move on to the report of the President of the Board of Education. Dr. Lewis covered the content I wanted to cover, so I'll just extend my gratitude to the teachers and the principals who helped support our students in seeing the eclipse yesterday. I got to speak to a second grader. I got to speak to a second grader at Cordley Elementary who described it as the best toenail they'd ever seen, which was really amazing to me, and one that thought it looked a bit like a banana. So both really great descriptions, so that's all I have. And we'll move on to, we do not have public comment today that is not related to an agenda item. So we have one that's related to a report that's coming up later. It's a, we'll have you come up then if that's all right? Okay. So we'll now move on to board commentary. Start at the end and come on.
Yep. Just a couple of things that I've been able to do since the last board meeting. So April 3rd, was able to go to Woodlawn Site Council, was able to, Kristin Ryan and Ron May came, and we spent the entire time talking about attributes that members of the Site Council wanted in a new principal for Woodlawn. It was a really great and productive conversation. Really enjoyed just being there and listening to that conversation. April 4th, had a negotiations meeting with Certified, and we talked about middle school schedule, talked about updates to healthcare and potential changes to leave buyback. Over the weekend, was at the NSBA convention. Last night, had another negotiations meeting where we touched on middle school schedule, and then this morning, had a facility committee meeting, planning meeting that Shannon's gonna touch on. In the consent agenda today, just a couple of things related to facilities and IT. There's a Final Site Contract Addendum. Final Site is who manages our website. It's an addendum to integrate into Active Directory. We have two replacement utility vehicles to replace some, we have about six that are about 20 years old. And then our Senegix, the emergency response project that we have, we're adding additional coverage for all of Broken Arrow. And then the bond refinancing resolution is on there. We had talked about putting that on there, so it didn't need all of board approval, just the board president with a target savings of two and a half million dollars.
Thank you. Anne, I think you had some?
Okay. I apologize if this is a little long, but I wanted to cover everything. So on March 28th, I attended a third-grade music program at Sunflower and was super impressed with the ukulele skills of all those third graders. And I love that the students there are able to learn a variety of instruments while they're in elementary school. April 2nd, I was unable to attend the ACE Award presentation due to a prior commitment, but wanted to congratulate Marie Daniels, who's a job coach and parat at Pinckney, on winning that award. April 3rd, I attended the Innovation Expo at LHS. I was amazed at the beautiful art that was being produced by our students, and my family definitely ate more than our fair share of the delicious food prepared by the culinary students. And there's some recipes that I definitely want to get a hold of. April 4th, I attended the Negotiations Committee just to watch that I can better understand how that process works, since I'm not on the committee and new to the board. I did attend the NSBA conference over the weekend, attending a variety of different sessions, but I really thought that the, some of the keynote speakers there were really fantastic and had some great messages. Ruby Bridges, who was the first African-American child to attend an all-white school during the Louisiana desegregation crisis, spoke, and she spoke about the importance of parents being involved in their kids' education, you know, reminding us that it all, it definitely takes a village. She also talked about the importance of hope. Never think that something is impossible, the other side isn't giving up, so we must be hopeful. And my kids were super excited when they found out. First, they said, "She's still alive," and I was like, "She gets that a lot," I think. But they recalled learning about her in school and were super excited that I got to hear her speak. And then another speaker was Dr. Timothy Shriver, talking about the dignity scale and how we often look at each other and get each other wrong. It's a lot of times we sell each other short, and when we do that, it's a short road to contempt, treating each other with contempt. Contempt has become the language of political speech in America, and the rise of racism and antisemitism and violence are evidence of that. We need to focus on language that is spoken on moments, in moments of conflict, and it's not that we disagree, but how we disagree. And I thought those were really important messages to be shared. Yesterday, I attended the Sunflower Site Council meeting where we talked about attendance, behavior, and enrollment. Good news is that attendance is up 1% to 2% from last year generally across all weeks. And then she told us about the Support Education Program, which allows them to be proactive with some interventions outside of the school system before filing for truancy. It provides tutoring if needed, and students can work towards a big reward by attending school. So I thought that was a great program to help our students out. In regards to behaviors, she and the staff at Sunflower had a kind of a reset meeting prior to spring break to ensure that everyone knew the correct follow-ups for behaviors, teachable moments, care team calls, and office referrals. They were not on the same page previously. Sometimes teachable moments were put in as office referrals, et cetera. They also, one of the things that they said that they learned is that, you know, if there's a pair in the room, the pair can monitor the class while the teacher took the student out into the hall for a teachable moment. And since that point where they've gotten aligned on what behaviors kind of fall into which categories, they've seen a dropped in care team calls and office referrals. So that's exciting news. And then she spoke about enrollment. So they have 95th graders moving up to middle school next year. So far, they only had 45 kinders or students, future kindergarteners registered, but she knew that, believed that the number would definitely increase, but won't, doesn't expect it to come close to the 90s. So just another example of us exiting more students than are coming in. I attended my first Beyond the Board Room last night. I was pleased with the turnout and definitely excited to see students there bringing ideas to the board. I thought that was really awesome, and I definitely hope this is something that we continue to have as the board. And then finally, this morning, I was able to harass G R., who is still helping out as a crossing guard, which I think is awesome, so.
Okay. Hi, this is Carol. I will try to be brief. Let's see. Let's see, on April 2nd, my colleague and I, Bob Byers, we attended the Equity Advisory Council Committee meeting, and we would like to thank everybody for their engagement and participation, and we, we broke into groups and we drafted definitions from the Equity Advisory Council, for the family engagement definitions, and we will be submitting those to Dr. Lewis for his consideration on April 16th. And let's see, and I'm encouraging those members who are on Equity Advisory Council to please open up your email and look at those suggestions. Let's see, Thursday, April 11th, I, the Sunset Hill Site Council will be having their parent committee meeting at 5:00 in the conference room. Monday, April 15th, Swegler, the Swegler Site Council will have their Site Council Committee meeting at 5:30. And Tuesday, April 16th, Billy Mills Middle School will be hosting their Site Council Committee meeting as well. And just some free events, just putting this out there for PSA, the KU First Nations Powa will be held this weekend on Saturday from 10:30 to 8:00. It's a free, family-fun event, and I will be volunteering there, so if you see me, just come stop by and wave. Let's see, and on Saturday, April 20th, the Watkins Museum is hosting a Lawrence Earth Day Fair for families, and I'm very excited to see that our solar panels are up and running at Prairie Park Elementary. And just to that end, I just want to thank this board for their work, their continued work on what we, my tribe, we have a word term for Mother Earth, Sigma Kua. So I, I'm very encouraged and happy about this board as we look for ways to continue to reduce our impacts on Mother Earth. Thank you.
All right. I'm gonna start with this week and then go to last week. So really appreciated all the community members and students who came out for Beyond the Board Room last night. We had a great turnout and some informative conversations. G R. and I did have our monthly facilities meeting today. Wanted to share a couple of things that G R. hadn't mentioned about things that, that we learned. FNO staff has started providing a monthly update on our facilities usage, and I think it's really informative when you, to know that our facilities in the, just the month of March, were reserved for 1,100 events that were held. So the, the usage of our buildings for both district-related and outside-of-district-related events is quite high, and I appreciate all the work that our FNO staff have put into creating processes and procedures to assist with that and make that a more seamless and transparent process. To that end, the board should know that probably in May, we're gonna be seeing a revised Facility Rental Guide that FNO has been working on for quite some time, and they're gonna be bringing that to the board for approval. In addition, we got updates on a number of projects. We are going to be doing some, a fair number of roofing projects this summer. We'll touch on six different school buildings and the largest of which is gonna be at Lawrence High School. So I know we've heard, we've heard some, some feedback about some of the places that we need to be doing that work, and so it looks like that's gonna be in process for this summer. The board should expect to see in the coming month or so, in our, at our second April meeting, we did do another round of, another request for bids on the East Heights property, and we will be seeing some follow-up on that at our board meeting on April 22nd. We're also gonna be seeing some, some work around our printers that we use in our print shop, band and orchestra instruments for next school year, and also, there's gonna be a paving project by Cordley Elementary, and we're gonna be doing some updating of our parking areas in, in relation to that particular project. Okay, wanted to say a quick thank you to the Lawrence Chamber for inviting me to give an update on the district today at their Government Affairs Luncheon. It was a lot of fun to give that update, along with an update that Deana Johnston and our Executive Director of our Schools Foundation gave on the work that the foundation does to support our district. So appreciated being able to have that opportunity to share. And then I wanted to go back to last week to give a quick legislative update, if I may. The good news, we actually had some positive movement on the budget as it relates to special education. It's not final. Through a series of events, the original proposal that was not as positive for schools was actually voted down in the Senate last Thursday, which I think in, in my many years of following this, it might be the first time I remember a budget being defeated on the floor, once it had been sent out of conference. That was a very big deal, because the thing that, that really tipped, tipped the conversation was an attempt to rewrite the special education funding formula in a way that would have ensured that after next year, there would have been no statutory, statutory reason to give additional increases in special education funding. So that, that was really important, that that was defeated, that, that particular proposal also would have allowed the state to take credit for local option budget dollars and, for special education and call that state aid for special education. So there were some really bad policy things in that bill. It was defeated. They sent the proposal back to Conference Committee. A lot more work and legislative sausage making happened throughout the day on Friday and into Saturday morning. They did not end up running the budget on the floor, so it hasn't passed either house yet, but the proposal that is gonna be put out would give 75 million in new special education funding to schools next school year, and it can't, that money would come without the, the worst of those policy changes that had been proposed. That's a, that's a huge win, because we've been advocating for several years around increasing special education funding in this state. The governor had proposed about this much money in her budget as a down payment on a five-year plan to, to close the gap in special education funding. You know, this is, this is a small step forward. The gap statewide is really about $423 million. And if, and if you kind of do the math, it really will still take five years of sustained putting $75 million more in each year to get us to where we close that gap. So, but there, there's reason for optimism there. And it-
Can I ask a question about that?
Yes.
So separate, different than the, I understood that the dollars we, we could potentially be getting now will be ongoing-
Yes.
-perpetitive to the others, which was gonna be final, which you had, like it was a one-time-
Right. Um, yes, so, so it's ongoing in the sense that once they put that $75 million in, they can't take it back because of the requirements in the federal law about maintenance of effort. So it'll be $75 million more every year going forward. The governor's plan, though, would have put in 75 million next year, and then an additional 75 the second year, so that would have been-
Okay.
-150. And then, so adding, so that's what, that's what we'll be looking to work on, you know, and, and to continue that progress. In addition, relative, related to issues in our district, they did change, they did pass the bill that is gonna change the, the student count that we use for funding. Instead of, right now, we can use a one-year look back or a two-year look back. That will become either current year enrollment or a one-year look back, but next year only, districts will get to use an average of a two-year and a one-year look back. So there will be a slight decrease related to that in our, in our funding, because we're a declining enrollment district, but it, it will help districts like us transition to this new model where districts will only use current year or one-year look back for enrollment funding. And just a final note, I want to say thank you to all the board members, staff, and community members who made your voices heard on these issues. In the past several weeks in the Kansas Legislature, I can tell you from being there in person that you were absolutely heard, and it absolutely made a difference. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I'll make it quick.
Sorry.
Not a problem. Not a problem. Just want to let you know, I attended negotiations, actually, we had two negotiations Thursday and then again on Monday, Tuesday, Tuesday. And actually, I had been on the negotiation team, my first stand on the board. It is totally different. It's really totally different. Okay. Attended Beyond the Board at Hill Crest, and actually, it was a very dynamic meeting, and I think really should continue next year. It, it is an excellent way to involve the communities. See, also had a announcement from, from New York Elementary on Friday morning, 7:30 to 8:00 a.m., you can purchase a cup of coffee or hot chocolate.
There?
Yeah.
Oh, my God, I'm on that, okay.
So here's- And see, also attended the District Equity Council, and we're discussing and looking at engagement. My thing with it is, is I always separate, separate out engagement to two things. There's community engagement and family involvement in family engagement. So as I'm looking to return our assignment, I'm trying to figure out, how do I separate Other than that, that is it.
Okay. Thanks, y'all. All right, we're gonna move on to Approval of Consent Agenda. Can I have a motion?
I move we approve the items listed on the consent agenda.
Second.
Jones?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Kuduh Blackwood?
Yes.
Costello?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Okay, so we're gonna move on to Liberty Memorial Central Middle School redesign update. It looks like Patrick Kelly and Dr. Schmidt are joining us, along with Vice Principal Mitchell and Sean Hanson, Director of Secondary Curriculum. Welcome, y'all.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you for having us here. We are back for, I think, the fourth time in the past nine months, so we're, there's a lot of continuing themes with a more specific angle about those informational pieces that were specifically requested from the board, primarily calendar, which leads to schedule, busing, and staffing, all of which are intertwined, and we have some slides to explain that. This is kind of our, our guiding statement that has been on, that has been presented to both community members, parent meetings, site council meetings, we kind of are using this. One of the things that Kelly was so, at the most recent site council meeting we had, there, thanks to Facebook and other maybe comments outside of the narrative that we can provide, there are some- can provide, there are some questions about maybe if we're a magnet school or things like that. So we produced a slide that we shared on our Facebook page, as well as should be on the district website, regarding some questions that have been presented to us from community members and how we can answer that, one of which, for example, are you doing away with ELA, things like that? The answer, which is no. I won't go through that, but it is a really, it was, it's a very helpful document for potential parents that are interested, for anyone, really. And as I look at the transfer requests that we can see thus far, it, it is a helpful guide for parents who might not understand exactly what next year will entail and what it will entail for their kids. So I would draw attention to that. Phil here, I'll let you speak to this. This is another repeat slide, but it kind of-
Yeah, this is one that we've seen before as well, just kind of talking about what the teaching and learning requirements will be at Central next year. This is part of that conversation of having an eight-period day that includes student success, but also builds in a requirement for a STEAM class to be taken, a fine arts class, but also building in room for more choice elective. So if a kid wanted to say, take two music classes, they'd have that opportunity as well. And then we also wanted to stress the need to have that individual plan plus PLC time each day as our staff is being asked to take on new ways of teaching, take on new teaching assignments. We really want them to be prepared and to feel prepared to put out a good product every day.
This is also, it just so happens to be the timing kind of aligned itself, but this is consistent with what the, to a, to a certain extent, consistent with the, what the MO, resorting back to what former academic year was for the middle school schedule. The difference being that our student success block would be a little bit larger in that we are, we are touting that as inquiry time, which we'll explain later. But I just want to point to that we are still providing those same elective opportunities, and when we say we are a STEAM curricular-focused school, that's in addition to other curricular offerings, an extension to which not replacement of. This has been, we have been very vocal as both, you know, supporters of our students as well of our sta-, as our staff members, and in order to take on that extracurricular block, well, I would say two, to a large extent. We have that extra STEAM elective that we would like to offer to students, and we have that inquiry block time, which is going to take some outside of just the normal curricular model. It's going to take stu-, teachers that are dedicated to really bringing project-based learning opportunities, curriculum, teaming, all of those things. And as such, we know that that is going to take time, and we are, we are committed to allowing our professionals to get to have that professional time. So we are proposing the, the schedule that we have kind of mentioned, but today's kind of the final, I guess, the timeframe of which would be 8:00 AM to 3:15 PM on every day but Wednesday. That would take, Wednesday would take us to 1:00 instead of 1:53, that's a shift. We would be going a bit later in the day to allow for that professional development. It would not decrease the con, this total student hours. It would just reorganize the moment in a way that we think better fits our curricular, instructional, and student needs. As such, you guys have probably been through those negotiation conversations, that when you increase the denominator of a master schedule, you have the potential to increase class sizes, which I don't think anyone in our community really wants to do, so that becomes the FTE request of an additional 2.0 in, in getting to that, that teaching or that eight versus seven hours.
And just one point on that with those four additional days, the focus of those days, as far as calculating the calendar goes, is using that time for PLC and professional development. Again, even if a teacher isn't taking on one of these new STEAM-directed courses, we're still asking them to shift the way that they deliver instruction.
Yes.
And so we want to make sure that we have time, kind of, you know, in addition to the, the days that are already in the calendar, to develop, to grow, to collaborate as a, as a staff.
We know that we, you know, it's our due diligence if we do have four days where our teachers are going to be engaging in professional learning to publish those dates for our community members early, so we can talk about the, you know, so, so our families know how to prepare for that. And so these are the days that we have suggested. It, it lies heavy on prior to spring break, because that's when we believe a lot of learning will happen. We are asking for full day blocks for a myriad reason, but one of which is when we, the second-to-last presentation we had with you, we talked, spoke about our partnership with Project Lead the Way and some different national curricular producers. They don't do like two-hours random PD. It's an eight-hour block, especially if you are trying to license or certify yourself to, I don't, or if you're going to specialize in one of their curricular options, most of those are whole-day events. So, and being true, I mean, just be, the sheer logistics of where we're headed kind of necessitates larger blocks than just maybe a one-and-a-half hour on a Wednesday.
And in response to questions last time about student instructional hours and contact, these days are actually Wednesdays, and so they would minimize the loss of that contact.
Yeah. We've kind of spoken through this. At the end, you know, we are, we are talking, I know, I'll say this, student success at the end of the day produces a lot of possibilities for community input, for students visiting outside of the school, but it also presents, we have to, we have to have time and really come up with a solid idea of how that works. So it's a, so it's tightened up at the end of the daytime and space. So that's what our team is going to continue to work for, look at what that inquiry block truly means in allowing, you know, allowing our power standards and discussions around our power standards to be communicated out to all staff members to see how they could best integrate that into their class.
And again, to try to minimize the ask of FTE when it comes to the, the PLC block within the daily schedule. Student success really serves as almost a block, well, a block, it's double the, the times that we could use, say, half of that for a planned period or a PLC block and be consistent with those that might have plan or PLC during hours one through seven. And then the other aspect of that student success is, we're still going to be doing everything that student success has been this year, with character strong, with intervention time. So we want to make sure that we have the time to do those things well, but then have that additional time to add the inquiry block. And I will say that talking to staff about the potentials of, of what sort of inquiries could be developed, a lot of staff members are kind of excited and invigorated by the possibilities-
Yeah.
-being able to tap into their own interest and expertise and kind of expand that curriculum, you know, as long as it's, it's aligned with community involvement and student interest. But we've had some staff members come to us about, hey, what do you think of this? So as long as those projects kind of fit that STEAM inquiry rubric or curriculum, we really want to try to be, provide as many opportunities and options as we can.
It was exciting. We had an interview today without giving away any HR violations, but a non-science teacher, and we touted the idea of, hey, we really want all of our teachers, whether they be in the Fine Arts Department, whether they be in the World Language Department, to take on that inquiry block and make it, and to really collaborate with their colleagues, grade-level colleagues. And this certain individual was like, well, I was going to major in my said major because that would give it away, or science. So they were superbly excited about being able to branch outside their, you know, first-to-sixth-hour subject matter. So I, I do think that that is, it's not, it's, we have staff members who are truly, truly excited about that. And I, I think our retention rate, there are the, yeah, our retention rate speaks to that as well. Yeah, that kind of, we, we found that there's no cost, cost difference from that 8:00 AM start time, 3:15. Speaking of enrollment, retention, we are happy to report that our current projected enrollment is, is thereabouts a 400 students. That's slightly over what we have this year. I mean, it's, so we are trying to, we're advocating for an FTE that will keep, will not add to our class sizes, because what we're doing, you know, with this curricular addition, not necessarily a shift, but instructional shift to a certain degree, we certainly don't want to have an added burden of students having tons of classmates where it just becomes difficult, more difficult to manage. Okay, time for questions.
All right, very well done. Others? Go ahead.
How many transfer requests have you received so far?
That is through a district database. The last time I checked, we were less than 20, and the transfer-in requests were over about 15. So I, which were, we, we don't have a gross difference of any significant number thus far.
Okay. In regards to the four days that you're proposing off, I was just curious if, since the district is technically open those days, if we would be able to provide lunch for those students who would normally get lunch at school somehow?
On those PD days?
Yeah.
We probably can look into that. I can reach out to Julie to see, Julie, Julie Henry? Yeah, to see if there's some offerings, but typically on those PD days, we don't provide it. I'm not saying we couldn't in this instant.
I just know since, I mean, the other schools are open, that it's different than like a typical PD day, so.
Yeah, we can look into that.
Okay.
No question, I just want to thank you for bringing back all the answers to the questions we asked last time, and I'm really, I'm really excited about where this has ended up. I know it's been an extraordinary amount of work for you and your staff, and it's, I'm excited to see this fly.
Thank you for that. I feel that we're in a really great place of conversations with community members, with staff. It's, it's been, it's been a lot of work, but it's been certainly worth it, so.
Thank you.
Just a minute, I think I saw Carol. Did you, where you going to go?
Well, yeah, thank you, and I was about to ask your question about the, the transfer and then the enrollment projections so far, so thank you, and I just want to thank you for all of your work, and we can see your excitement and hear your excitement about from your, your report from your staff, but one of the things that we worry about as board members is burnout, and so we are very happy that would, that there's this great opportunity for our staff members to maybe look at options that maybe they, they were interested in, but maybe they're going to be stronger and-
Yeah.
-expand their careers, so thank you.
And yeah, and I do appreciate everyone's willingness to not expect this to all be a one-and-done by August, because that would have, had that been the expectation, that would have only further contributed. So we've been intentional about being, having a sequential rollout based upon what's feasible, because otherwise, it probably wouldn't be too plausible.
And that is, again, one of the reasons why these kind of regular days within our calendar, we feel are very valuable, is because it, it helps prep for that next quarter, helps fight off some of that burnout, because if we're adding more options educationally, we're not taking things away, we're asking, with a staff that's about the same size, we're asking them to take on, to wear more hats, to more preps, those sorts of things. So as they learn those new tricks and new courses, we feel like this is something that they're definitely going to need.
I definitely appreciate the thoughtful and measured rollout as well. I think you guys have put a lot of thought into it, because I initially was a little nervous that we were going to try to accomplish way more than was reasonable in a short amount of time.
It was the internet.
So the more, you know, the more I hear about this, the more excited I get, and I just think it's going to really be awesome, so I'm excited for you guys.
Cheer.
So I was, one, thank you for all that you've done, and, you know, it's been, it's been fun to watch the, the evolution as, as you've come and presented, and, you know, I'm just, I'm just curious, you know, as we, as we, as we kind of make, make, make light of it a little bit, I'm, I'm curious, as you've gone through this evolution, have you, have you found an actual tangible difference as you've interacted with members of the community, as you, as you've gone along this process, in terms of their understanding of what's happening, maybe has gotten better, they've, they, they have a better idea, or is it still, you all are still driving that ship, one person at a time?
That's a good question. I think the open house nights that we had, right around parent-teacher conferences, we're encouraging, as far as the questions, the types of questions we got, the things that needed clarification versus the things that didn't. The second night of that event was really well-attended, so that was exciting to see. And then we are going to have a couple of informational nights in April and May, and so I hope that the questions continue to kind of drill down to, now that we have some of the specifics we didn't back in early March, that we can provide more of those details as people make their decisions.
Do you have the dates for those?
April 16th is the first one, it's at 5:30.
And May 15th is the second one.
Yeah.
May what?
Just a minute, G R. G R., just a minute. Go ahead, Bob.
And I just wanted to thank you, as I'm sitting here, I tend to be more of a systems guy, so I look for how things flow, and, and I, for me, you've taken this from the idea to the reality, and you put meat on the bone, so things, so when people look at it, at it, they can understand what you're doing, why you're doing it, and how you're moving forward. So I'd like to congratulate you on that work, because it's really a difficult thing to do, to, to move through from idea to reality, and have it well-planned and thought out.
We have a phenomenal staff of dedicated educators, from counselors to social workers to, I mean, to teachers, to, we, it, it was a group effort, it really was, and sometimes it was, I wasn't even there because I was doing other things. So it really was our staff coming together and making this what we believe is going to best benefit our students.
Good work.
And I appreciate the board kind of hitting the accelerator at the last meeting, and just-
Yeah, because we kind of needed some-
Getting some momentum. It was a busy, I'm glad this meeting got pushed back a couple of days, I appreciate that. But it really did kind of-
Solidified some things for certain.
It is, and we got some great help from ELT in making those things happen as well, so.
Thank you, all.
G R., did you have one other thing?
Just speaking of pushing back, that was a good plug, a good segue, segue, the deadline for submitting a 2024-25 transfer request has been extended through Friday, April 12th.
Isn't that the next parent information night is the 16th? Would we consider extending it for those transfers specifically to, into?
We, we had a conversation about that.
So do you mean pushing the deadline request?
Go ahead.
Yes, anything's possible. I'm just concerned, no, seriously, I'm just concerned about our counselors and them getting classes scheduled.
I'm just saying, like, could we make it like the 17th or something, like, just, just for, if they were looking at Liberty Memorial?
If they're undecided.
Yeah, well, just so, like, I haven't been able to attend one of the, I mean, I've heard a lot, but I would like to go to the parent night and stuff like that before I make, and take my child before I make a decision, so.
I will say while they-
It's not just about me.
-deliberate that-
Just to make that clear.
Yeah, outside of our hands, but we'll take anyone any time, so.
Yes. I will say while they deliberate on that, that most everything that we put together as far as materials, some of the videos that you've seen, including the early March, I think the first night of the open house, is up on our website.
Yeah.
If you go to the Central website and click on About, you'll see a, a tab for STEAM, and that's kind of a place for all the information that we, that we put together.
So, yeah, I just want to be considerate of, like I said, the counselors and HR in terms of, of staffing, I don't want to put anybody in a bind, but obviously, this is new and we want to, we want people to get excited about it, and definitely don't want to turn people around, but we have to be considerate of our staff, too.
Yeah, within reason, for sure.
So I think the answer is, yes, we can.
No, I appreciate that. I appreciate that question.
With the caveat of, we may, we may need to go over and help out wherever we can.
Linda, do you have something?
Yeah, I also want to thank you guys so much for the information. In between the last board meeting and the first day of enrollment, I think it was April 1st, my grandson, which is at Billy Mills, actually, I had no idea, but he had been researching this school, and he asked me, could he attend? And so I told him, you know, asked him what was he interested in, and it was a lot of things that he wanted to do, so we sat down and went through some information, and his mom actually put in a transfer, so he-
Oh, my goodness, that's great to hear.
-it self-initiated, I want to go to this school for next year instead of going to Billy Mills, so I appreciate you guys, and he, and he's watching now, so he's looking forward to looking at all this stuff as well, so.
Thank you, Larry.
I will see you in August.
Christian.
Christian, thank you.
Yeah.
That's a true definition of a goal, we want all of our students to be the CEOs of their own learning, and he's really second in charge.
He's in sixth grade, so he was just like, I'm watching tonight, so I said, they'll be presenting tonight, he said, I'll be watching to see if I can get some more information, but I want to go there next year.
Yeah.
Well, one of the great things about the rollout, it being phased, is it allows us to also- Well, one of the great things about the rollout, it being phased, is it allows us to also build upon student feedback and interest as we go.
And time to regroup.
Yeah, and we're looking at, you know, building the first semester schedule and kind of pausing and seeing, you know, what is working, where, where, where the demand is and kind of being able to cater it that way as well.
What, what type of, I guess, comments, feedback, excitement have you been hearing from your students?
I mean, they are, well, our sixth graders had a great time at the, so I don't, we have very few transfers wanting to, out of our sixth grade students who've just got to go to that STEAM Academy and be part of it. I just, you know, I mean, I think that they're excited to be at Central this year. I think we've done great work at large, and this is just an added bonus. So I, I don't know that they've done any, like, I'm going to be a STEAM seven, you know, YouTube or TikTok slightly, but I do, I do feel that there's a growing, you know, I mean, one of our building goals was to grow our culture of learning and our commitment among staff, students, and community members. And I believe that we've done that at large.
Yeah. And just made me think of something that does not necessarily have to be TikTok, but any type of student social media campaigning to recruit, I think will be beneficial.
We do have an electronic media, yeah.
Okay, so the questions, there were questions last time about schedules. So it seems like you have direction on the schedule, there's no dissent from the board. So the next, the next step would be maybe some conversations with ELA and the negotiation scenes about variance you might need.
Yeah.
I am hearing from the board, also no challenges related to additional staffing, which honestly, we're probably going to come out in the wash when you looked at the, the MOU sunsetting. Josh Spradlin in the back is giving me the thumbs up because he's proud of me for paying attention at negotiations. So the, so those were kind of the areas in which there were, maybe you just needed to hear like some direction from the board. And additionally, I didn't hear any concerns related to the additional four days from the board. That's also something we don't necessarily have to vote on, but it does sound like there's support, and that's good to know for you all. Happy to see that there's not additional cost with transportation that supports your schedule. So I think you all are set to go whatever is next.
Working as a team and crafting what next steps look like, so.
Yeah, and the next big one for us is professional development.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Helping as teachers as soon as possible start those programs.
Yep.
Okay. Is my assumption around the FTE correct? That that is a, maybe, Christian Ryan, for those at home, is, is giving the thumbs up that that is correct. We would have had to add about that many to account for the MOU. So, you know, do good work, it looks amazing. Thank you so much. It's, I'm so proud of it, and I, I didn't have as much to do with it as I wish I did, so thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is.
Ellie, can we take a five-minute break?
Yeah, I was just about to say that, actually, so thank you, Anna. Next, we have safe and supportive schools and equity update, but we want to be completely present for that. So we're going to take a five-minute bio break and be right back at 8:32.
Nope.
I had a different time on my computer. We'll be back at 8:30, let's go 8:35.
There you go. Okay.
Let's go, let's go.
Look, I'm walking.
We're going to move on to safe and supportive schools. I've never, this is the first slide I've used.
Well, we saw how effective it was.
So the next board president.
I can see how red you are from all the way down here.
All right. Dr. Johnson, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good evening to the board, and thank you for this opportunity to bring you an equity update. This is looking primarily at our third quarter data. And let me begin tonight by saying that the data that we're sharing tonight, this is information that is in our Power School student information system. Nothing has been drawn from any other sources. This is information that we have based upon what's in the system. And let me also state that equity does not belong to one person. It belongs to every department, every school, every classroom teacher, every administrator, every district leader, every custodian, every cafeteria worker, every single person in this district is a part of the work that we do regarding equity. So I'm saying all that to say that when you see different people in different spaces and different places, we are all working towards the same goal. Tonight, I want to bring you, bring to your attention again, our focus of our strategic plan. We're looking at safe and supportive schools. We are the champions of the work that we do with equity. We're being joined tonight as well with Dr. Jana Craig-Hare, who is our, her data, just, she's so absolutely efficient in the work and things that she does. So we're so honored to have our Director of Data and Assessment here that's also going to share information with us and with you today. Our district goals, always focus on reading, mathematics, and post-secondary success. And I said always, that means since we put in our new district goals, which was during the summer at the beginning of the school year. Just a reminder of our equity policy, I know you already know this because this is the work that we do every single year. And each time we bring an equity report, I want to bring you your attention down to the highlighted section that focuses on the superintendent or the designee, that's me, as long, as well as the other people behind me. And we're focusing on the progress and the outcomes and how we are sharing this information, at least quarterly, whether it's in a written format, a presentation format, which is why we're just looking at third quarter and things right now, as well as the broader Lawrence Public Schools community. So it's shared with different groups about the work that we're doing as it centers around equity within our district. Tonight, we have a total of four presenters. I am Cynthia Johnson, Executive Director of Inclusion Engagement. We also have Dr. Jana Craig-Hare, who is the Director of Data and Assessment. We have David Fard here tonight, who's our Native American Student Service Coordinator. And we have Jennifer Georgie, our Lead Student and Family Support Facilitator. Tonight, I want to begin and set the stage for where we're going. We're looking at data, and there's one essential question that we're going to look at tonight. What does the data show about how we are doing? There are numbers on the screen that you're looking at right now. And as we go through these presentations and these different slides, I want you to keep in mind that every number that's on that screen that you will see here in just a few minutes represents a child. It represents a child that's like the children that are over on the right side of your screen, and it also represents your children, your grandchildren, your nieces, your nephews, your brothers, your sisters in this district. So I don't want us to ever get that separate. We're looking at numbers, but the numbers represent the children that have been entrusted into our care. So what does the data show about how we are doing? Tonight, we're going to kick it off with academics. There's a quote on the screen. It talks about, you know, the gains. We saw some very, very good gains last year. We showcased at the beginning of the school year, different schools, and there were more schools that had really made some significant gains. But then you will see that nationwide, that schools are still working hard to reach the pre-pandemic achievement levels. So keeping that in mind, I'd like to turn this over to Dr. Jana Craig-Hare, and she's going to bring you the assessment update for spring 2024. There you are.
Thank you. So assessments are my world right now. So we are in the middle of state testing. Good positive thoughts for our scholars as they finish up their assessments by April 19th, and then our virtual students can test through May 3 virtually. So that's a new, new option this year. Right now, we're looking at the CAP predictive interim assessment. This is from our spring window, so that was January 29 through February 9. The interim predictive is, we just started that two years ago, last year. This is an assessment that students take three times a year in ELA and math, and it is aligned to the state standards. We use it as a district common assessment, so it's a way that we can kind of do a dipstick and just check to see how are our students doing related to the state standard across all of our buildings, and then also compared to other students across the state. It does help predict future performance on the state assessment. And one of the good things about this, one of the advantages is if students do all three of the tests, they are exposed to all of the content standards that they would see on the summative assessment that they're taking right now. And then the other advantage is it uses the same system that the state assessment uses. So there is not unfamiliar technology when they get ready to take the state assessment, that stress piece is not there, hopefully, just because they are familiar with the system and the tools and all the resources they have available. So when students take the predictive interim assessment, they receive a high score and a low score. So it's the high predictive, so on the best day, this is the score they might get on the assessment, and on the worst day, this is the score they might get on the assessment. So to bring this into one metric, then we just take an average of that high score and the low score, and then put that on the, you know, use that scale score against the cut scores per grade level, per content area, to say this is probably the level they're going to score. So that's the prediction piece of it. So this is showing our overall ELA and math, and really, one of the areas that we focus on is that Level 1. So what are our percentages, our number of students and our percentage of students in Level 1? And then how can we use this instructionally? And all of our schools have reports just like this that show the breakdown by levels and by grade level. So how can we use this instructionally? So do we have students that are predicted to score in Level 1? And then what can we do in our classrooms that could impact that, that could hopefully get them to a Level 2? Or do we have students that are like right on the bubble? So they might just take a little bit more to bump them over to the next level. So then what are the specific standards that we can work on that could help bump them over to the next level? And then we've also broken this down by subgroup. So, and again, our buildings have the same type of information within these subgroups. So we're using the same model, an average of the high score and the low score, and then looking at our Level 1 students and really looking at the subgroups. And in this area, you know, the focus area, I would say for ELA, would be looking at any of those subgroups that are, more than 30% of our students are predicted to be at a Level 1. So our free and reduced lunch students, our students with disabilities, the ELL students, students who identify as African-American, American Indian, multiracial, and Hispanic. So those would be the ones that we should really be pushing in on and focusing some extended efforts. The next one shows our math. And again, if we're looking at our Level 1, students that are predicted to score in a Level 1, you know, the concentration areas would be free and reduced lunch students, students with disabilities, and African-American students. Pop over. Yes.
I want to take just a moment to give you just a quick update on our academics' current practice. This is not everything that is taking place, but I just wanted to give you a quick snapshot. I want to begin with the needs assessment. Patrick Kelly shared this information with you last summer. It is a massive document, whether it's online or whether it's in a printed form, that truly guides the work that we do from a district level as well as a building level. It includes our district goals, and it gives you a snapshot of our data as a whole, as well as it gives you a snapshot of each individual building and their building goals. That particular document guides our work, and that leads us to where we need to be academically. Tomorrow, just by chance, the teaching and learning team will have our retreat, and we are preparing for our summer institute as it relates to the work that we will do in our preparation for our needs assessment for next school year. So not only for the district, but also for each individual school. Another part of the academics, I'm hitting the areas in the orange or gold rod, whatever color that is up there, our focus on literacy, math, and post-secondary success. If you, when you saw the subgroup data, especially in the area of ELA, you saw that there were multiple subgroups that had larger or higher than 30%. I believe that that is directly related to where students are in the area of reading. If a child is having struggles reading, it is hard when they get to a passage, a paragraph, or whatever they're trying to decode or decipher to be able to give a response. I was a struggling reader, and I'm sharing that to say I understand that from those standardized tests, that pressure that comes, and sometimes it makes you want to give up. And you just start selecting answers. So, you know, we're still looking at all of that, but I believe that literacy is a major part. But one of the good things that we're doing is the work that Denise Johnson is leading in the area of our letters training. It is so exciting to come through here, even last night, to see the groups of teachers that come in, those elementary teachers that are coming in and focusing on different strategies to ensure that we help students become and remain successful. Another part that I want to talk about, just very quickly, is the use of the Closing the Access Opportunity and Achievement Gap framework. This is the framework that leads our equity work. I've had the great pleasure twice this year to work with equity teams from every school. And in that work, we center our work around this framework. It was revised a little bit from last school year that we shared, and we added those levels. You'll see, I'm going to, and right in the center, it says, what does the data show about how we are educating all students? And that comes from that question that I opened up with tonight. What is, what does the data show about how we're doing overall? But how are we educating all students? And then as you go around the diagram, you'll see that you look at the levels of our marginalized population, especially in those levels of Level 1, but also looking at those levels, students in Level 2, because we want to move those students to Levels 3 and 4 as it relates to achievement and attendance and behavior. And then what type of instructional strategies do we need to have in place to help each student and every student be successful? And then what type of social-emotional components need to be incorporated? Not going to go into that too much because at our next board meeting, we're going to bring you an update on that work. But that is some of the work that we are doing. So as you look at responding to the data, you saw a lot of data, you've seen a lot of numbers. Remember, that represents each child, different children in our district. One of the things that I have to say that I believe that we need to acknowledge is that post-COVID unintended consequences has had impacts on learning. I know we keep moving, but we have to realize that there are things that have happened, not just to students, but to families and in our community. We have to accept that, we have to own that before we can continue moving forward. Another area that I want to talk about is the cultivating relationships and trust. I know that in our ELT, we're looking at how to close the trust gap, because there is a gap. And that gap, in many ways, widened throughout the pandemic. That was an unintended consequence. So what type of strategies can we put back in place, or new strategies can we put in place to build those relationships and to restore that trust or to build a whole new level of trust? And then Mr. Byers said that he had homework today, and you're right, we do have homework. But one of the most important things that we can do is to connect with our parents and our caregivers and our families to improve educational outcomes. It doesn't make a difference if you're talking about attendance, if you're talking about standardized tests, if you're talking about behavior. If you want to see those outcomes change, involve your families, involve those caregivers. So that's where we are in responding to the data. So I'm going to ask the question again, what does the data show about how we are doing as it relates to behavior? Behavior has multiple categories: attendance, chronic absenteeism, behavior, discipline, and restorative practices. And I want to bring this particular quote to your attention. Dr. Clay Cook, who is the Chief Development Officer for Character Strong, he states that, you know, last year, Character Strong, they interviewed and they engaged with thousands of educators across the country. They identified two particular areas that they were grappling with. And unsurprisingly, chronic absenteeism and escalating student behaviors emerged as primary concerns. So as we look at our numbers and we look at our datas, it's not just happening here in Lawrence Public schools, it is happening throughout the nation. I just took this one clip for you from the New York Times, just came out last week. We talked about it in our Equity Advisory Council, and it talked about why school absences have exploded almost everywhere, almost everywhere. And what types of things are different districts I'm talking about? And what types of things are different districts doing to decrease that chronic absenteeism? It is a challenge, it is a struggle, it is real, we deal with it every single day, but we have hope because we're not going to give up. So right now, I'm going to bring Jennifer Georgie, and she's going to talk to you about attendance.
No. So let's take a look at this data. So at the end of third quarter, the cumulative attendance was 90.71%. And then at the end of the quarter, the chronic absenteeism was 29.38%. I just want to remind everybody that in order to be chronic, it has to be less than 90% with that. So looking at the attendance by grade level, we have the elementary, middle, and high school. So just looking at the elementary, elementary students came in the first quarter at 94.2, and then by the end of the third quarter, little dip with 92.7%. Same with middle school, they are currently at the end of third quarter at 91.5%. And the high school, starting the first quarter, end of first quarter at 90.7%, and then bigger dip with the third quarter at 87.5. So then, taking that chronic absenteeism and really breaking it down with our students. So in the green, these are students who are attending 95% or more, and we have 40.63% of students that do not have any attendance issues. And then the chronic absenteeism, they're at the 29.38%. And I think it's important to point out what's, this data, the way that schools use this as well, they can look at the chronic absenteeism and really identify those students who might need support in their building. So this is a good way to break it down, to see those students that need support. We also do it by grade level, and as you look at this, you might notice the highest, which is our fifth graders. We have 47% of fifth graders who do not have any attendance issues. What probably then stands out in the opposite is our 12th graders are at 50%, are chronic. And that is a yearly trend with 12th graders. They tend to have a higher chronic absenteeism rate.
And I will give it back.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next, we're going to look at our average daily attendance by race and ethnicity. If you look at the elementary, middle, and high school levels, you see the colors across the graph. Down below, you see the legend. If you look at the elementary levels, everyone is above 90%. It's a little bit lower as it relates to our middle level with our American Indian, as well as our multiracial students. There are other categories as well as our African-American students. And you see that the data drops even more, and Jennifer just said this, at our high school level, we look at our African-American students, our American Indian students, we look at our Hispanic students, once again, at our average daily attendance by race and ethnicity. This next slide is giving us a glimpse of our data by race and ethnicity once again, but it relates to chronic absenteeism by subgroups. You will see that the top two subgroups, and I say the top two, when KISA, when KSDE came in last week and we did our first KISA check-in, one of the questions that they asked was, what are the two subgroups that are causing, you know, the greatest concern as it relates to the data? Not as individuals, but as it relates to the data. The two that I spoke about was our American Indian, Alaskan Native, but also our African-American students. And the reason that I selected those two particular subgroups, not just because of the number, but also because there's an intersectionality, because some of those students also may be eligible for free and reduced lunches, they also may be students of disability. So those are the two that we've shared with KSDE. Tonight, we have David Fard, who is going to come talk to us. He is our new, as of about a month now, American, he is our Native American Student Service Coordinator, and he's going to come talk to us about the American Indian, Alaskan Native, and the 46% of chronic absenteeism.
Alito, Chamae. You know, all of these points listed out there, they're all interconnected. And so one of the methods that we're going to go after is we're going to use cultural activities to engage not only our students but our families, because they want to trust us, they want their hopes to be fulfilled, and they need to know that it can happen at these schools in this community and not have to go somewhere else. So we're just going to make every effort we can, we're going to do all the studies we can this summer in surveys, and then next year is going to look totally different for this program than it has in the past.
Thank you. So as David said, what he did was, what he was talking about was that family engagement piece, and that is one of the interventions that we are using this year and will continue to make that bigger and better. So when we talk about the interventions on how are we going to improve attendance, it goes on the tier system. So the tier one would be those interventions for everyone. And we started the year off with a tier one intervention that I highlighted here, and that was that September Attendance Awareness. And that was a lot of fun. I don't think our district has participated in that before, and that became really knowledgeable for parents to look at those facts about what happens when kids miss greater than 90%. And it was just good information for students and got us in the right mindset to, that everyday matters for that. So tier two interventions that we are using and are seeing significant difference is the one-on-one conversation. So when a student falls in that chronic or trending chronic to try to get them before they get to be chronic, oh, sorry, we're having those conversations with parents and students and figuring out what those barriers are and talking with them about the barriers and what can we do to help you get your child to school. Thanks. And this is probably a good time to give a shout out to the Attendance Secretaries. They're really amazing. I see them each week, and they are, they are probably the ones that are making those phone calls with the principals and talking with parents and making those relationships and connections so that parents can trust them and share what is really going on. And they work really hard in making sure our attendance is accurate in Power Schools. So we're very appreciative of our Attendance Secretaries.
Once again, I want to take a moment to give you some examples of how we're responding to the data. Once again, we have our numbers that represent different children, but how are we responding to the data? The two, the three I wanted to highlight, once again, you see the engagement, you see that theme, you've heard that theme. I didn't put that in there just for you, Mr. Byers, but you hear that theme because we know and understand. Like I said, we're looking at research from Attendance Works, from Safe and Civil Schools, and every single spot we go to, every single research study we're looking at, that family engagement is being mentioned. Another one that we are going to work with schools on as we enter into next year, we may select a school or two to kind of do a pilot, a pilot or so for a week or so, but engaging students and monitoring their own data. Oftentimes, students don't know what their attendance rate is, sometimes they don't know what their grades are. And when I, when we were talking about this, the first thing that came to my mind, I went all the way back to 2007. I was a middle school principal, and we came to visit Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools. And at that time, Dr. Jim Connell was doing his work First Things First. And part of that work of building relationships and developing trust involves students being able to monitor their own data. You could go up to any student and say, can you share your data portfolio with me? They're like, sure. And they would open up and they would say, in algebra, you will see that I'm this far ahead, or these are things I need to make up. And not that I'm saying that every single student has to have a portfolio, but students need to know the numbers. I heard that, I heard that message over spring break, know your numbers. And that's the message I want to bring to students. Work with principals and work with educators and teachers and staff members, know our numbers. Sometimes students don't really, I've missed 10 days, I've missed 15 days. They may not know, but they're adding up. I think that is very, very important. And also incorporating the resources from Attendance Works and Safe and Civil Schools, that is in conjunction with our Stronger Connections Grant, we're going to be able to provide resources, some absolutely phenomenal resources that Safe and Civil Schools offers to us, as well as some different coaching sessions and things. So we'll talk more about that a little bit later on. So let's look at behavior and discipline by each level. Is that me or you? Okay, just want to make sure before I start talking. As you look at our numbers across, and you can look at first quarter, second quarter, third quarter, at the elementary level, third quarter, there were a total of 154 events that involved 98 students. At the middle level, you'll see that third quarter, we had 392 events with 198 students. And if you will look at elementary, that from second quarter to third quarter, it decreased also at that middle level. And you can see that second quarter, I'm not going to play like I don't see it up there, second quarter was a challenge, and especially at that middle level. And if you look at a middle, middle school, 392 events and 198. hundred and ninety-eight students. And if you look at the steady decrease that is taking place at that high school level, kicking off with the first quarter at two seventy-four, then it went to two forty-two, and now we're at third quarter, we're at, at the end of third quarter at one forty-nine. So it's exciting to see at that secondary level, what changes and things that are taking place within, within our district. Our next slides that I'm cheering with you and I, it was one entire table, and I separated it so you would be able to see all of the numbers here. And we're looking at the elementary level by subgroup. I'm going to draw your attention to the colors, if you will. So let's begin, and you can look at the colors, the color of green, that means that we're going in the right direction as it relates to female students. I'm not going to go through every single one, but as we look at the, once again, at the, go all the way down to the bottom, and we look at our white students, twenty-three point thirty-three percent, again, heading in the right direction. And then we look at a direction where we don't want to go. If we look at our students of disability, students with disabilities, and our African-American students, as well as our multiracial students, once again, we see that trend at that elementary level, because we talked about this last school year, that trend at that elementary level where students of color, students with disabilities are receiving more consequences than other subgroups. That's at the elementary level. The middle school level, once again, I'm going to draw your attention to the different colors. The green is demonstrating and showing that we're going in the direction where we want to go. We want to see that decrease, and you can see that decrease at that middle level. Shout-out to the middle level, the work that you're doing. I know it's challenging and hard at all levels, but we know that historically, our middle level numbers, as it relates to behavior, have been higher. We look at our males, we look at our free and reduced lunches, as well as African-American, American Indian, Alaskan Native, as well as multiracial and Hispanic. So even though it's not the great big gains that we want to see, we are moving in the right direction, and I think that's very important to note. At the high school levels, our males were heading in the right direction, our free and reduced lunches, our African-American students, and that's exciting to be able to see at that high school level, because remember, we just saw the elementary level, and my thought was, okay, what's happening at the elementary level? What types of things are people identifying that is leading to the point where we have to go to a consequence? So as we go into next school year, I've already, I've already had a discussion, Dr. Irvin, I don't know if you're watching, but I'm going to go ahead and say your name. I've already had a talk with Dr. Irvin as we looked at, I know he's the secondary director of schools, but also looking at, what does it look like to sound, and sounds like to effectively educate African-American males? What does it effectively look like to educate African-American females? So, as well as other subgroups, what are, what are things that we need to know that we may not know at this particular time? So this, once again, is our data by subgroup for each level. Our in and out-of-school suspension, Jennifer Georgie's going to come and talk about that.
So with this, looking at the elementary, middle school, and high school, especially comparing them to first quarter, second quarter, and third quarter, you can definitely see the middle school that Dr. Johnson was talking about with in-school suspensions and out-of-school suspensions. As a educator that spent most of her time in middle school, second quarter is definitely a tough quarter with behavior with that. But we are seeing less, which is great. Third quarter, that is, the goal is to definitely have students in school and not out of school. So with these incidences, we have tracked the restorative practices. So we've had six hundred and ninety-five behavior entries. So I'm going to take a look at that first chart there, where it says restorative practices prior to behavior entry. And so this chart really represents the staff, or most likely the teacher, that has put the entry into power school. And so, third quarter, six hundred and ninety-five, but one hundred and seventy of those, around twenty-four point five percent of those, that staff member used restorative questioning. So when they put the incident in power school, there's an area where they can identify that, yes, they used restorative questioning. This is something that did not happen five years ago. You know, taking the time to really talk with the student, like what happened, giving them their voice, not just jumping to conclusions. And that mindset takes time with, with teachers to take a look at the restorative questions and really look at the incident. They may not get through all the questions because of the incident, maybe the student is anxious or doesn't want to talk, but at least they're starting it and they are asking, you know, what happened? How are you impacted? What do you think needs to happen to make it right? So that's, that's what it means for the prior-to-behave your entry. And then the second chart, this is more of that tier two. This is done by the principal or somebody on the restorative team that has had that training in tier two. So of the six hundred and ninety-five, third quarter, five hundred and seventy-two were used with restorative, and that's a lot. These are entries, these do not necessarily mean students. Very rarely is an incident just involve one student. So when you do restorative work, you're going to be working with that student and then the one that was harmed, or maybe it was even a teacher that you have to talk with. So I really commend the administrators and the restorative team, taking that time and going through that, that tier two process, because the goal is really about repairing the harm, if, if harm needs to be repaired, or changing the behavior. Yes, we want to lessen our out-of-school suspension and in-school suspension, but the ultimate goal is to change behavior using that restorative work with that. So what is our current practice with restorative behavior? Lots. There's lots of stuff that I'm really proud, we still have a ways to go, and we, we still need to do a lot more work with restorative. I've highlighted the one that it really stands out to me. On February nineteenth, the elementary teachers had their professional development day, and most elementary teachers have been trained in the tier one, but I had over eighty elementary teachers choose to attend the restorative practice in the classroom, and their feedback was positive about how they can incorporate, easily incorporate the restorative components to their morning circle that they are already doing. They've already been doing community circles in their classroom, we're just adding a few of the components, like the talking piece, but very, very proud that I had, that we had over eighty, which is great.
Our next steps in responding to the behavior includes, first of all, the tier one. Next school year, Team I E B and student support facilitators are taking over all of our tier one training. No longer will we have to consult with, we're still, they're still our partners, but we won't have to pay for someone else to come, come in to facilitate our training. We're going to be able to take those philosophy pieces, and then, instead of just having a generic training, we're going to be able to help people look exactly at what we want and what we want to see put in place within our districts. We're very, very excited about that. Another piece of our restorative behavior work is our development of our elementary restorative and behavior matrix. This has been talked about for about a year and a half, almost two years, among elementary administrators. This is something that has been asked for, we're beginning that work. It involves Jackie Mickel, who is our lead elementary principal, it involves our new elementary director of elementary schools, it involves Dr. Bill DeWitt, J.C. Roberson, and then Dr. Bill DeWitt from our secondary, because we, we want to do that same type of alignment. We don't want to have one document look this way, and then a whole, another document that looks completely different. So we're really excited about that work. And then, making sure that our new staff that's coming in, that we are ensuring that they know and understand and receive training on the tier two and tier three. So in that level, next year, we are going to consult and work with KIP Corps, but after next year, we're taking over tier two and tier three. So it becomes our work, we're utilizing works for not only from KIP Corps, but also from other national programs. I don't have this on the screen, but I want to be able to say this, as part of our Stronger Connections Grant, we're going to be able to take a team to the National Restorative Justice Conference this summer, to be able to sit in the same place, in same space, with school districts from all over the United States. I mean, I have my list, like, I want to, I want to go see Oakland, California, I want to go see this one, but they'll be there, talking about restorative justice, not just in schools, but also in the greater community, how they grew it outside of the four walls of the schools. So we're very, very excited about that. I'm also going to ask Jennifer Georgie to come up here, stand next to me just for a second, she doesn't even know I'm going to do this. A couple weeks ago, Jennifer received an outstanding invitation, and we're going to support her in this work. Jennifer has, has been asked to serve as a trainer through KIP Corps. She's done a little bit in the past couple years or so, when she was at West, but we're really excited about that. We're working out and finalizing all the details. We're excited about the work that she is passionate about, that she can talk about all day, all night, to be able to make a difference in the lives of children. So we want you to know tonight, that we are honored, that now here in Lawrence Public Schools, we will have an individual that works with that KIP Corps team. It will not interfere with the work that she already does, but it will support all that we do within this district. So I'm going to give you a round of applause for that. Thank you. Stronger Connections Grant, we're excited, very, very excited to bring Christine Cathy from Hillcrest, I'm sorry, Sarah Cruz, that I had to steal her, but we're very excited that she's coming to be one of our behavior supports specialist, facilitator, I have the wrong word up there, it should be facilitator, no, it is behavior support specialist, thank you, let me get it, let me get it straight in my mind here. And Christine will work with elementary schools. And then we will have Emily Ross, who is coming from, coming to us from the Manhattan School District. She's very, very excited about coming here. She brings, both of them bring a wealth of knowledge to be able to help us move forward as it relates to chronic absenteeism, classroom management, behavior. I had to put this disclosure on the screen that this position is not assigned to a particular building. I've already been asked that question, can I, can I have this person be housed in my building? That's what that role is. That role is to be able to help schools at the elementary and secondary level. I'm very excited about what will take place at the end of this month, as it relates to our equity work. And are very explicitly, and our equity policy identifies those students that, that may identify as LGBTQ plus, and being able to offer services and resources to our educators so that, as well as to our families and to our parents, so we can ensure that we're all moving in the right direction. So at the end of this month, April thirtieth and May first, we are going to have a professional development from our national office, from Glisten. So we're very, very excited. There will be invitations going out, we'll start getting our registration. I literally finished details at about four forty-eight today. So getting, you know, finding time and finding space to be able to bring these team members in is very, very important. Another area, as it relates to Glisten and as it relates to LGBTQ plus, is an area that I appreciate you, Carol Cadoo, bringing the Blackwood, bringing this to my attention, had never heard of this area, but we're finding out more information. I have it written down, so I can make sure I'm saying it correctly. This is an area, as it relates to, like I said, Glisten and the work that Glisten does, but from a completely different perspective, and this is called Two Spirit.
Correct.
Two Spirit, and the organization that Carol shared with me is entitled The Past Remembered. And it's a project that centers on the two spirits and the LGBTQ plus community. It strengthens, it strengthens its residencies and the histories, is our movement toward healthy equity. So we're going to be finding out more information about Two Spirits. I know, Carol, you shared that at the end of May, I believe, Two Spirits organization is coming into the Haskell University.
Correct. And they will be, they are in contact. Jericho Cummings, Cummings from The Past Remembered Project is working with the students at the Haskell for the Allies of Equality Club and the Haskell President, Dr. Arpan, to make arrangements to come in, to talk to the administration and students.
Excellent.
And so they want to come in and visit Lawrence Public Schools to improve the work that we're doing.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I appreciate all the information, and I guess I will continue working with Dr. Lewis, as well as ELT, as we learn more about it as a team. Thank you. So the last question, what does the data show about how we are doing? Tonight, we've revealed for you our glows, and there are many glows. We talked about our grows, because there are definitely areas where we need to continue to improve and expand. We talked about our challenges. There are some challenges that we face every single day, that we, we know and understand, and we want to improve. And then we also talked about our opportunities as it relates to our students, our families, our faculty, and our staff in Lawrence Public Schools. At this time, we'll entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you all very much. So we'll start maybe down, who, can I just see who has questions to go? Anne does, Bob does, Carol does, okay. G R., you do, or?
Yeah, I'll wait for a moment.
Okay. Well, maybe we'll start this way then. Go ahead, G.
I would have a number. One, first around, around our, our first subject, just around education. Yeah, I know we have a lot of our staff looking at reading, and as we're talking about achievement, I know most of the reading stuff is around early education. My question is, are we doing anything for students who have, who may be in middle school, have reading problems, reading issues? Are we doing anything to help catch them up? Because as they move on, that affects their future performance.
Patrick, can I ask you to come just for a moment? Yeah, the answer to that is yes, but I'll let you, I'll let him expound a little bit more.
Yeah.
We're finalizing details, is why I have to share it all.
Paul, can you repeat your question?
Well, my, well, essentially, it is, we're, we have our elementary educators looking at new theories around reading and new processes. As I grew up, I had reading issues, and the problem is, as you grow up and you move on in your education, those still exist. And I'm wondering if the new stuff, the new theories, are we giving our older students the opportunity to use those theories or learn them?
Probably not as much as we should. The new law requires us to screen every student for dyslexia, and so we do a screener for every student pre-K through twelve, to see what their reading levels are. We've done quite a bit of work at the elementary level. We have more work to do at the high school level when it comes to the science of reading, which I think is what you're, what you're talking about. You know, I think as we look ahead to KISA two-point-oh, is what they're calling it, one of the four fundamentals is that literacy. And so we're going to need to elevate and really expect higher levels of, of reading instruction, especially at the secondary level.
Should this go before board comments? Public comment should have gone before board. Thank you, but that's up to you. Okay, just want to make sure.
Should we maybe continue, like, focus on a section at a time and maybe?
Right.
I think, anyway, so we, Bob, do you have additional questions? You said you had others? You said you had others?
Yeah, no, that's, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
My input is on the first section, on the interim assessment scores. So one of the things that I have been hearing a lot about relates to the goals that are being set for us around assessment scores, particularly as it relates to this conversation around literacy and the, there's some new legislation that's going to create a literacy blueprint for the state. And in that conversation with the legislature, they are going to be asking, looking at our performance in that area over the next 10 years, nine years, with some goals in mind for performance on those state assessments. 50% of kids in Levels Three or Four, 90% in Levels Two or Above by 2033. So while I think we need to continue to set our own goals for our students in our district locally, I think it's helpful, for me at least, to frame, looking at this through those conversations. And there's a couple of things I noticed in our data that I have questions about. So I just wanted to point them out. And we don't have, you don't have to answer them tonight, but I would like to have some further conversation if the board is interested with, and Dr. Lewis. In looking at our data with those metrics in mind, it seems like the areas that we are particularly needing to focus on are particularly middle school, ELA, all three grades, and then eighth grade math. Those are the areas where I see the highest levels of kids overall in Level One. And if the idea is that eventually, we only need to have about 10% of our kids in Level One, 10% or less going forward, you know, those are the areas that we have a lot of work to do. So I am curious as to, I know that assessment scores typically dip in middle school across the country. That is a trend. But I'm curious to have some further discussion about what particularly we are going to do in Lawrence Public Schools at the middle school level to really make some improvement in that area. So I appreciate the data. I do also wonder about whether the middle school behavior data that we saw, how much those two things are traveling together, the achievement, the performance on those interim assessments, and the behavior challenges that we're having. So I just wanted, I don't really have a question. I just, that was an observation, and I'm.
And a request for a.
And a request for some additional conversation.
Okay.
In the future.
So Anne had made a good observation that might be helpful to stay on sections as we go through questions. So are there additional questions on Section One? Go ahead, Drew.
I do. So I was looking at the, some of the other reports, the equity update for third quarter that were also attached in the agenda. And they were talking about district goals of 75% students in kindergarten through 10 will score at low risk or on track in the Fast Bridge. And I'm just trying to understand, how does that correlate to state assessment performance, like, as far as, like, at risk, or, sorry, low risk? Is that, like, in the two, three category? What is on grade level considered? Is that a two on the state assessments?
Yeah. So, and Jenna's coming up too. So a Fast Bridge assesses skills, whether it's reading skills or math skills, or what I refer to as academic interferences, those things that impact students from mastering or achieving proficiency on the state assessment. So for example, a Fast Bridge reading assessment may give teachers information that says, okay, Anne needs to work on fluency or continent blending. Because if, until Anne corrects those, it's going to be difficult for Anne to read this passage and identify the author's purpose, which is what the state assessment assesses. So state assessment assesses how well we're teaching the actual standards. And this Fast Bridge gives teachers information in terms of what are the skill sets that students are maybe lacking that may prevent them from being successful. So they don't align, but they help inform the other. Jenna?
Yeah, exactly what you said. So Fast Bridge is your norm reference test. So it is looking at those foundational skills, and more specifically in reading, and the skills that it takes to be a fluent reader. And then our state assessment is a criterion reference. So it's really looking at the state assessment, or the state standards. And the state standards are ELA. So those include reading, but also writing and some other things, too. So that's why when we looked at setting our goals for the district, we said the Fast Bridge was probably a better measure to look at foundational skills. And if we have those foundational skills, then it should impact state assessment scores. So just looking at those two things, kind of in tandem together.
Okay. I appreciate that clarification. But in looking then at state assessment scores, is two considered at grade level, or is three considered at grade level?
So two is still at grade level. So it's a basic understanding of grade level standards.
So the, I've sat through several presentations on this in the last three months. The State Board of Education does not use the term grade level in relation to the state assessments. There, if you read the descriptions of their categories, they're talking about a Level Two student has a basic ability to be, to continue on and be prepared for college and career at graduation. Level Three is, they use basic, something, 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 something. So there's a lot of debate and misunderstanding about what the state assessment is actually measuring, because it's not.
100% agree.
It's definitely not, if you score Level Two, you're on grade level. Like, they, the testing people from the state, but they also say.
Actually trying to accomplish with this.
Yeah, they also say that grade level, or Level Two, Three, and Four, when you look at the data, students who score in the upper half of Level Two go on to have high levels of graduation rates and post-secondary persistence. So it's a lot, it's a really nuanced conversation. And so I think it's really sometimes hard to understand exactly what those tests are telling us, I guess is what I would say.
Yeah, I mean, I did a deep dive a year or so ago, looking at it, thinking, you know, because we all talk about wanting to have as many students as Level Three or Four as possible. And then looking at results of different school districts, and when you look at, you know, like, even like a Blue Valley, which, you know, had the highest scores in the state, they still were maybe at best 60% in those. So that's, and this is really a conversation for anyone that has accountability in this room, but I just wonder what we actually think they think they're actually testing and what information they're getting from that. Because it seems to me, if that's where we want students to be, but even our best school district has 40% of the students lying below that, then are we testing the right things? How accurately are we measuring things? It's more of a statement on frustration with the tests in general, but.
The interesting thing, they have done, in the parent information they provide for this Kansas Assessments, they've done a crosswalk of the levels and the predicted score for students on the ACT. Levels Three and Four, if you're scoring a Level Three, your predicted ACT score in reading is somewhere between a 23 to a 30, and in math, a 23 to a 29. So that's Level Two, 18 to 22, 16 to 23, depending on if you're talking about reading or math. So, you know, a Level Three and Four is a pretty high, those are high achieving students.
And historically, we've always outperformed the state. And so if we look at Levels Two, Three, and Four, we're at around maybe 70% of our students that are on grade level, if we consider that on grade level and above. Really, this comes from the federal government. The federal government requires four or five, some states have five different levels. We have four. And the federal government requires states to define proficiency or those two levels, define proficiency using two levels. Some states use below basic, basic, proficient, or advanced. We use Levels One, Two, Three, and Four. Level One is basic understanding, no, it's not. It's limited understanding. Level Two is basic understanding. Three is effective understanding, and Four is excellent understanding. And so that comes down from the federal government. I'm actually going to, a group of leaders are going to, from Missouri and Kansas, are going to Washington next month, and we're going to lobby and talk to some people about this. Not that we can get it changed, but it does require a lot of work on school districts, and it doesn't accurately paint a picture of how our kids are doing, in my opinion. Patrick or Jenna?
And then part of the conversation, too, is that this is the last year for this state assessment as we know it. So the conversations right now are, we're building a new state assessment for next year that are, and new interims and everything, that will be in effect for next year. So as we move into that, the talk I've heard is that we still have four levels, so that part doesn't seem to be changing. But once we do the state assessment, and then next summer, they will have like a, it's a cut score meeting. So they'll look at where the level should be drawn. So Level One should be a cut score between these two numbers or these two ranges. So they look at where most of the questions come in. It's a big standard-setting conversation where they're looking at all the scores and then determining what those levels are for all the future tests based on what happens next year.
Trying to create the levels off of a bell curve or something? You're saying?
They look for more like natural breaks in the scores. So not like a one or two, but maybe there's a 10-point difference between somewhere. And so that, okay, that's probably a natural cliff where, okay, these should be Level One, and then the next part would be a Level Two.
Shouldn't it just be like easier than that to know, like, if you only have like 25% of the questions right, you're probably at a limit? You know what I mean? Like, I don't understand why you would look at the scores to create the scale.
Because they don't have the responses to those. They don't have a big enough dataset that says this is how students are going to respond. Some of the items, they have been testing the items each year. So and our students this year taking the assessment have some of the items that are being tested for the new assessment. So once they have kind of a validity and reliability on the items, and those go into the tests, then they'll want to do that, further tests of having all students take those items and now see where all students fall on those before they determine exactly where the different levels are.
That still seems backwards to me.
We're going to, we're going to.
They'll be searching for volunteers. So if you'd be like, part of that, if you'd like to be part of that process, it's usually at KU. And they'll have teams that come in with educators that kind of go through that whole process.
I would actually be interested in that.
So mark your calendar. We're going to move the conversation on here so that we can make sure that we get to some of the other questions we have. So we were on questions related to the first part of the presentation as it relates to assessments. Are there other questions on this section? Okay. And we have a request for additional data, which will come at a future board meeting. Moving then into conversations around behaviors. Questions in this area? Just a sec, I think, did you have a question?
Just start down there and come this way.
Okay. So I'll say, for me, looking at this data, one of the things that would be helpful for me to look at so that I can understand and be more responsive to the equity policy as it's written, I believe what I'm looking at, and please correct me if I'm wrong, it shows us the, what happened in the first quarter, the second quarter, the third quarter of this year. But for me to be able to understand our progress, I need to see where we were at last year comparative to this year. And that is what I'm asking to see.
That is part of our fourth quarter.
That's fourth quarter, you might have said that. I apologize if I missed that.
I did not say that, but that is, we discussed that actually yesterday in ELT. That is part of our comprehensive equity report. We'll look at all of last year. If you go back and even look at fourth quarter from last year, it is cumulative of the entire school year.
So what you're doing now is waiting until the year is over, which makes perfect sense. Thank you for explaining that. I appreciate that.
So a fourth quarter is a good timeline?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, that makes perfect sense. Thanks for clearing that up for me. And then the other, the other question I had, we did have a comment come up around how we record behavioral events and the challenges folks might be having in recording those based on the shift now to restorative practices. I presume, over the years of looking at the behavioral data, we've seen challenges in that area. You know, it's a hard, hard thing to capture for a lot of reasons, like when the incident's happening, the recording that has to happen, but also just how you, how do you categorize? Sometimes it's subjective. But is it fair to say that we can look at last year's data to this year's data? We might have had the same challenges collecting that information, but it is still informative of where we might have successes, where we might have challenges. Can you, do you mind?
Yeah, certainly. We can look at, and probably, last year is probably the year that we, it's our baseline year. And so we definitely look at last year and compare it to this year. But again, we don't, it's not an end-all, be-all. It's just one data point to start a conversation. Because we do recognize that sometimes it varies in terms of what's entered at schools, and then sometimes just teacher workload. I may not be able to get this referral in. So we do acknowledge that as well.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
And I think it's also important to add, Dr. Lewis, the quantitative data is looking at the numbers. That's why that restorative piece is so absolutely important, because you have that qualitative component as well. And I'm sitting here thinking, this is my fifth year, this is only the second year that we've had the same entering system.
Okay.
For inputting data.
So the baseline really, from last year, will be a good comparative point, unlike, for example, we're talking about changes in the state assessment, right? From last year to next. Okay, thank you. Behavior question, go ahead.
I have a question. Well, so.
Carol, did you? Wait. Go. Not so much a question, but an observation. I'm looking at the chronic absenteeism, absenteeism, gosh, sorry, it's getting late. Let's see, I'm looking specifically at Slide 21.
I don't have the numbers up here. Can you look above? Is that that one? Is it that one?
Yes, that one, that one.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, it says 46% for the American Indian or Alaska Native population. I know, just remembering last year, it says, this is just 2% like less than this time last year. I mean, it is moving the needle, but according to the USD 490 website, there are 530 Native American students. So it's a small population, but a high number. So I just want to know if you have any observations, or what's going on, or how can we get these kids into the seats? Because as Patrick Kelly has said, our students don't, they can't learn if they're not in the chair.
I'm going to have David come, because I know that he has looked at some of those observations. And our goal is, and one of our goals is not just to have them, we don't want them just to sit there.
Right, right, right.
We want that engagement level, which that level of belongingness is so important. David has looked at this data. We've already had conversations about that.
So technically, we're looking at 849 students that checked the box that said, I'm Alaska Native, American Indian of heritage, and only 500 that have actually done the NASS paperwork. But what I've seen in the data and talking with the students is, there's no push to get them to school. And so every little thing that says, well, the bus was running late, or, well, you obviously weren't there when the bus was running late. So it's getting the parents re-engaged, because there's a lack of trust in our community. And that's part of this whole process over the next year, is just re-engaging the parents and the students at the same time to get them to trust us enough to do the right thing by them. And so I haven't really been given a good reason why so-and-so hasn't gone to school. It's just why I didn't go. My parents didn't make me go. So why? That's the question.
Great, thanks. And Jennifer Georgie, she can, she will, I'm going to pull you in here, Jennifer, but you and I both took a part in the White Bisons, the grief training, if you will. And we did discuss the historical trauma impacts on our Indigenous population, so that may or may not play a factor into the distrust of the education, educational system. I'm just trying to guess here.
Well, one of the things David and I talked about was like that video that we saw.
Right.
Just educating our staff and teachers about the history of schools and trying to rebuild that trust, as David had said. So I just think we need to look into bringing that in.
Thank you.
I want to also just add a note that we did not say earlier. Thank you, Colleen, for reminding me of this. We will have a master level social work intern that will work just with our NASS departments. We're very, very excited to be able to have an intern with that laser-like focus.
Super.
Carol, when we look at Native American chronic absenteeism rate nationally, pre-pandemic, it was around 30, 31%. Post-pandemic, it jumped to 54% nationally. And so ours is, rather, still. And so ours is rather still highs below national, but it's something that we need to dig a little bit more deeper into, probably to get to down to some street data to really have, just have some conversations. No, we were, we did an article that talked about, numbers are one thing, but then going out into the communities, talking to students, talking to families to identify those barriers as to, you know, why our students are not coming to school.
Ask what's going on.
Yeah.
And you could, I can see the social work student being really ready to do that. So I don't know if that's part of what they're, I don't know if that's part of the plan, but that would, I mean, you would know better than me, but that's an appropriate role and I think hopefully will have an impact, so, along with other things you're doing.
Yeah, we're gonna go at it in every different direction. And I'm more than willing to do cultural humility for our own staff so that we have a broader understanding of what it means for our indigenous communities. Because honestly, most of the kids here aren't permanent residents here. They're moved here for a reason and hopefully they'll stay. And that's part of that trust issue.
Also, Carol, reminds me and for you as well, some of the conversations you had around curriculum changes that we might see and the work that you and others were doing in that realm as well, and that probably speaks to not only some of the cultural humility training you're doing, but also like what is a broader understanding that we could bring to the district? So I don't, that-
Oh, no, that's-
Yeah, that also seems like a-
Yeah, and that's exactly, in Deb Holland's report, Boarding School Report, that was one of her recommendations is, her recommendation was including education about boarding school trauma and history. And that could be something, that would be, that would be the first recommendation I would recommend.
We're also doing that education for our students on, can't remember what date it
is, at the end of April, we are taking a cultural tour. We are starting at Haskell. And from Haskell, we're going to Spencer Museum and then we're having lunch that is being provided by the Chamber who offered to do this for us. And then from there, we're going to Brown versus the Board of Education. Couldn't fit Watkins in because they were already full, but we would have stopped by Watkins. We'll do it next school year. So students also need to know.
Thank you. So question, other questions around behavior? Go ahead, Ann.
Yeah, so in relation to the behavior bias subgroup charts, I think to give better context, it would be good to know what percentage, because really you're looking at, like for instance, males versus females, that's out of 100. So those shifts don't tell me anything other than it went back and forth between girls and boys. It's not telling me, okay, females are 30% of the population and they're only 20% of the incidence. Like, that would give me a reference and then, or number of incidents to see if they're increasing or decreasing by subgroup. Because really, these proportions don't give me, I don't think, give me any information to actually make a judgment on how these subgroups are doing because in relation to one another.
I would work with Dr. Janet Craig-Hare. She compiles the data and work for us, so we'll work with that. And to be able to make sure that you want percentages?
Well, I think, I think if you're going to talk about percentage of incidents, I need to know what percentage the subgroup represents as a frame of reference, so if they're over-indexing.
So over there, to the left-hand side, if you look at the females, you're looking, you're wanting out of the elementary school, what is the percentage of females for that 2,138?
Yes, I think that's important, but I also think then also having a chart of number of incidences that those percentage are related to so that you can track. Because if overall incidents went down, boys still may have gone up while girls went down, but you may not see that in percentages.
So it may be good for us to do a little bit of a session about data collection on some of this because we may have a high number of incidents but have a low number of student, students who actually hit that. So I think we just need to talk about how you want the data shown and what, what that looks like, how you're wanting that reported. We're still trying to make sure we're getting you the data that you need and we can do that.
I actually think that's a great idea, Patrick, because I was also wondering about duplicated incidents or whatever, if it's one, one child that has a, you know, significant behavioral health issues, what might be contributing there? So I think a work session really for the last quarter might be a good thing to do. And then you can educate us on those pieces, like what the data is. And then we'll have an opportunity to say in the future, maybe for 2023, I mean, excuse me, I'm way behind, 24, it gets late, 24, 25. We can talk about what that would look like for the subsequent year so that you all know when you're preparing these reports, like what is it that we're asking for and you're not getting the feedback too late for us to, you know, get. So does that sound like, that would be helpful?
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
And Kelly, may I also say that this table that you're looking at right now was developed based upon a request from a board member last school year. So we duplicated, if you will, is that, if I'm using that correct, Dr. Janet Craig-Hare, that, you know, this, we duplicated this, the same table. So now we have an additional perspective that you want to bring and that's, and that's what-
And I think, actually, I think it would be great to hear a little bit more, like just like, what do you do with the data? How do you apply it to change? How do you make decisions with it? So I really think it would be-
Exactly.
-a great way for us to get educated as a group, also to hear about like how you make decisions here from building level. So I think we can spend some time thinking about what that work session would be. We don't have to figure it out tonight, but that might help resolve some of the ongoing confusion that I'm recognizing as a pattern from that last year to this year. So we can do that.
And I think it's important, not only how we use the data from our district perspective, but how, how individual buildings use the data.
And I think how the board uses it, when we look at the equity, equity policy, like, are we using it the way that we say we're gonna use it? So we've asked for different types of data, but what is it exactly that we want to make sure we're doing so that we can be partners in improving some of this stuff? So that would be great if, and we can look at it around a time that makes sense, post, when you have the end-of-year data.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
And then, so you talked about the elementary restorative and behavioral matrix is being re-looked at, so-
Our district implementation. Oh, you're talking, I'm talking, I'm sorry, let me go right here. Yes, the development of the elementary restorative and behavior matrix.
That was one of the things that we talked about at the Sunflower Site Council meeting is how different individuals are classifying the same incident differently. So maybe somebody has a teachable moment, somebody did an office referral for it. So I think that's great work. I think it's sorely needed, but I would say then that I think next year would become your baseline because you would have created that new template and hopefully then more people would be on the same page. And then your only variance would be whether or not somebody actually did report it. But I think that's a great, great thing that you guys are working on, so I appreciate that.
So next, so we're putting that in, we're putting the document and things together now. We have multiple examples that have been collected that incorporate our CI3T, not just any behavior matrix or restorative behavior matrix, but also incorporate our CI3T. And then from there, just like this, this year, we put our new secondary behavior matrix, this is our baseline data.
Yep, that's great.
That we're utilizing. So we'll do the same thing with the elementary.
Cool. We, I'm recognizing the hour and we still have a bit more to go through, so I'm just, anything?
I'm ready to move on.
You're ready? Okay. Okay. Thank you all very much. I look forward to the additional information coming up. And we are gonna move, before we end, we have someone that's here to give us public comment. And Cynthia, I have to say, I cannot read your last, your writing, so if you wouldn't mind, come on up and introduce yourself. We're glad you're here, welcome. Thanks for your patience. This is a very late time in the evening, so really grateful that you waited and hung out with us.
I appreciate it. And if I read a little bit more slowly, I hope you guys have a little patience with me. So I'm Dr. Cindy Courtney, and I am here today primarily as a Lawrence community member as well as a parent of one but soon-to-be two Prairie Park students. I'm also a veterinarian and a conflict researcher. So first, I'd like to thank the district and particularly Dr. Cynthia Johnson for your ongoing commitment and investment in restorative practices. Of course, there's a lot of good news today in what Dr. Johnson and her team was able to share with you. It's good not only to see the successes, but also an ongoing commitment to looking for those behavioral trends and the barriers to implementation going forward. I've also heard several of you allude to the importance of not just getting rid of conflict, but how does conflict happen, as well as the importance of involving families and the community. So that's all, all great to hear. But I'd also like to ask some questions. In particular, while there is some data on the frequency of restorative practices being used, as you guys are thinking about what data you're asking for, personally, I'm curious about what types of restorative practices are being used, what restorative approaches are being used. You guys have alluded to some of that, you know, is that a teachable moment? Are we using some of those restorative questions? But also, are there being effective statements used? Coached problem-solving, restorative circles, behavioral agreements? A little bit more granularity on how is our district actually using restorative practices and what restorative practices are being used? That would be useful in a number of ways. I probably don't have time to address here, but would be happy to expand on further. Additionally, one of the benefits of restorative practices is to try to help address demographic disparities in discipline and in suspensions in particular. However, while some has been included in past reports, demographic data here was provided only for the behavioral events, not for the suspensions or the use of restorative practices. And while I appreciate that the underlying causes for behavior and suspensions are multifactorial and that a successful implementation is not determined by data alone, it would be helpful to know this kind of information as the district assesses which students are getting access to restorative practices and what the potential impact of not only restorative practices in general, but specific types of restorative practices in particular might be. As I mentioned, I'm excited to hear about more plans for developing family and community involvement. That was a great point, Mr. Breyer's, about the difference between the two. I hadn't thought of that before, but it does feel different, that's true. Well, just a suggestion, I've heard discussion about whether the character strong curriculum's values might be an opportunity for the community to engage at large with restorative practices and social emotional learning at large. I know in our family, we love the reports that come in and the activities that come with those character strong reports. It's been a great way for us to engage as a family, not just in teaching our, our students, but also in as adults being like, hmm, maybe we need to think about taking responsibility for our actions and our family more generally. So again, just wanted to thank you all again for your time and ongoing commitment to restorative practices and inclusion. This stuff is important for every single student in our district. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Courtney. Dr. Courtney, did you write your questions down? Do you have them in electronic?
Yes, I can get those emailed to you all if you'd like.
That would be helpful. That might, they might lead some of our workshop questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we're gonna transition to student, our student transition attendance and behavior And Patrick Kelly and Dr. Hare, or Craig, or Dr. Craig-Hare are here to provide that information, or maybe just Patrick.
James.
James.
Where was it?
Oh, there it is.
It's a PowerPoint.
No, not the Equity uptake.
That one.
That's steam.
It must've gotten closed. Let me open it up. I have an email.
Transitioning attendance data.
Okay. Should we get the chat?
Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Kelly. I'm the chief academic officer. I'm sorry that my PowerPoint went to sleep already. I know it's late and I will try to move through this data quickly. The purpose of this report is, when we had the discussion about school closure last year, we heard there would be significant impacts on our students. And so we wanted to monitor those students and understand those impacts. Students were identified in our school, our student data system so we could create a data set. And tonight, we're gonna look at attendance and behavior data for those students and compare 2022, 23 with 2023, 24. This data is inclusive only of the information that's in Power School. I want to be very clear about that. Teachers and administrators have significant latitude on when to enter behavior or other data in our student management system. This report does not represent all of the behaviors that have occurred, only what is entered. There may be individual situations that are not represented in what's presented this evening. Our buildings have had, experienced larger numbers of students as students have come to their buildings, and this may have made it more difficult to enter in some of this information. What you see here is the data set. There are 402 students who attended Broken Arrow and Pinkney in 2022, 23. 336 were elementary, 66 were middle school. This window is between August 1st and February 28th, and we mirrored that window this past What you see here is the attendance centers. I think I made a slight error on the, every middle school and all but one elementary school had students from Broken Arrow and Pinkney attend. There's some really tiny slivers on that chart that I don't think I quite picked up. So only one school didn't. The ones that aren't on that map are, there are three at LVS and three students also at Southwest Middle School. In that data set, 36 students left between those two schools, left those schools and were not in the following year. I do want to highlight before I jump into all the data, the work done by our Broken Arrow and Pinkney staff in supporting our students. Our students' success is really cumulative, and we really owe a lot of gratitude to the work done by our Broken Arrow and Pinkney staff to prepare students for what happened after they attended Pinkney and Broken Arrow. Their student success is done because of the work done not only by those teachers, but those teachers who received those students. So just as we dive into it, there's a, there's a way to look at this data that says one school was bad and one was good. That's not what this is. This is just frequency and some data to look at here. So what you see here is our average daily attendance. We wanted to, initially when we did it, we just looked at the cohort group, but then we said, wow, there's some significant gains here. So we want to see if we're making gains across the district. So at the top, you're gonna see all students in K8, and you'll see that attendance has improved for all students, for elementary students and for middle school students K through 8 between 2023 and 2024. Then we look at the cohort group and we see gains there as well. This, just went away on that, that's back. This is really a credit, I think, to the work that was done by our teachers and our administrators and our families at both Pinkney and Broken Arrow, and their communication with students new schools. We had PTAs that did logos for all their shirts. We really worked hard. Our, our elementary principals and middle school principals really communicating about how we can welcome these students in. We also have to express a ton of gratitude to our parents. We asked them to change transportation plans. We asked them to meet new protocols that are happening in a building, how it might have been done at Broken Arrow, might not have been the same way it was done at Schwegler. We had to meet new people, and so all of that is the great work done by our families, our students, and our staff and our buildings. We're gonna take a look at chronic absenteeism. You heard a little bit earlier, so I'm not gonna go into the definitions of each one of those, but this is our students K8. You'll see that we are increasing no absence issues, that's the gold for 2023, 24, and decreasing chronic absenteeism trending and nearly are very close. I want to highlight before I show the next slide to look at the scale. I know you know this, but these look very similar. That's 3,000, 2,000, 1,000. Remember, our subset for the other was much smaller. So when we look at this, we see that our students who were attending Broken Arrow and Pinkney have made some similar gains. We see a 44% increase in no attendance issues and a 28% decrease in chronic absenteeism. I also broke it down for you by K4, so we could just look at elementary and then look at middle school separately. We saw an 80, this is 84% of our total students in that group, 44% increase in no absence and a 29% decrease in chronic absenteeism. Our fifth grade set is a very small set, and you'll see later, I'm gonna use some caution about reporting some of these numbers because we don't like to report student cohorts that are under 10 students because now we start to be able to identify those students. But just caution you about that. This is 16% of the students in the data set. There's a 62% increase in no absence issues and a 23% decrease in chronic absenteeism. I'll stop there. That's all I'm gonna talk about on attendance. I thought it might be good to see if- I thought it might be good to see if you had any questions so far. Okay, we'll continue on with behavior. I met with our elementary principals this afternoon to walk through this data to see, Dr. Lewis called it earlier, "street data," right, or anecdotal data, to see how this matches. And I wanted to share some of their comments. They said the beginning of the year was rough. It was hard. We had some staffing decisions that maybe came a little late. But they really said that as students came in and they learned new behaviors and what the expectations were, and created new relationships with teachers, that fall was tricky, but it's really been improving as we've gone into the spring. We do have, you know, some, the principals reported, there are some concern about how much is getting reported, and it needs, I think, Kelly, you talked about that earlier, and we need to continue to work on that. But I think there was an overall feeling that we're really making progress in behaviors. But we're also seeing progress in behaviors across the district. Green is your teachable moments, orange is your parent contact, and blue is your behavior entries. You can see our teachable moments have been pretty consistent for K8. Between last year and this year, we're reducing the number of behavior entries, and it'd be interesting to do a little unpacking on why we're reducing parent contacts. That's just something to look at in the data. Here's our Broken Arrow and Pinkney students all together. I put the numbers on these, you'll see 349 to 250, but to some of the discussion we had a little earlier about the number of incidents, I thought I'd share that as well. For our K4 students, there were 70 students for those 349 instances. And let me go to the next slide to help with that. So this is our elementary students. K4 had 70 students in 2022-23 who account for those 300, and then the next year it was 33 students. So just trying to break out that data a little differently. Good, and that our total numbers are going down, and our number of behavior entries are reduced as well. For our fifth grade students, it sort of went the other direction. I don't know that this is, the good thing is, look at those number of teachable moments, right? This is probably not uncommon for our fifth grade students going into sixth grade. If any of you have met a middle schooler, I taught middle school for a long time. Remember, they also went from one teacher, maybe two, to seven teachers a day. So that's a lot more expectations to learn as they go through those years. So just sharing that data about them a little bit. And then we're going to look at ISS and OSS. You'll see that in that same time period, we saw a decrease in both the number of OSS and the number of ISS and the total number as well. And then we also saw that in our group of Broken Arrow and Pinkney students in that cohort. I thought I'd just let you know the total number of students in each group. So when you look at the orange box for 2022-23 for these students, that calculates a total of 58 students. And then over in the right-hand box, that's 21 students. So incidents are different than the total number of students involved in that. And maybe this is a way, as we think about how to share data in the future, to sort of see that, right? So you can see those bars for our K4 students from 2022-23, and then in 2023-24. And you'll notice in that blue bar on the 23-24, that's less than 10 students in that group of first through fifth graders this year. And finally, our middle school students. Both of these groups, so these are 20, both of these groups are less than 10 students. So we're seeing maybe a few students have a high number of these OSS and ISS experiences that we're working on. And when you visit with principals, they know who those students are and what those challenges are. We want to make sure that every report, we talk about equity. I wanted to be real careful, and we didn't, we're not doing graphs on this one, because this is a subgroup of a subgroup, right? So we're getting really tiny here. But here are some things we saw. We saw increases in average daily attendance for all subgroups except Asian and Native American, decreases in chronic absenteeism. The largest decrease was multiracial, and the smallest decrease was black, and increases in no attendance issue for subgroups, and you see the largest increase and the smallest increase there. And then for behavior, here's some of the equity data to look at. A decrease for all groups except Native American, and there was no change. And I will tell you, that is a very small subgroup in this data set. Parent contact increased significantly for all subgroups except Black. Teachable moments increased for Native Americans and multiracial. ISS and OSS, and there you start to see how small some of these groups are. We're looking at zero to one or three to four. And then the US of ISS decreased for 55% of our Hispanic students. So I tried to get that and make sure you, if you have any comments, because I know it's quite late, and I appreciate your attention to that report. Do you have any questions?
I don't know. You did really well for 10-12. Thank you so much. We had questions last night about when they would see academic data, and similar to my question to Dr. Johnson, that will be after the end of the year.
Yeah, we could certainly do that. We did take, we have some new at-risk indicators, and I will tell you, we just did that, we were trying to put behavior and attendance with the equity, or we've tried to put them a little bit side by side, a little theme action going there. But I did look at the at-risk, and a little, they're about the same. The at-risk numbers were the same last year as they are this year. We had some kids who are no longer at our at-risk and some who've been added, but it's about the same. We'll get you more detailed data once we finish state assessments, and we can look at that. We feel much more confident in that data.
Okay. Questions?
I just have, I just have two things real quick. So one, you know, anytime you pull data, you know, it's, you can slice data a lot of ways. And so I want to thank you for taking the time to try and put it in as much context as you possibly can, right? I mean, just trying to pull data out of Power School and present it as, this is the way it is, is not as transparent as we'd like it to be. So I like that you put as much context in there as you went, so I really appreciate that. So I just, I'm just curious, I just have one question. When you were going through at the very beginning, when you were talking about all the different schools, and you mentioned that it was all but one elementary school, and you mentioned that you met with principals today, did you meet with every elementary school principal today?
No, thank you for asking me about that, GR. I met with those schools that were hot, so the schools that received a large number of students, not all principals. And I met with those principals who were at Pinkney and Broken Arrow, they happen to still be in our district, and I met with them as well. And I appreciate them sharing some of the feelings of staff at Broken Arrow and Pinkney last year. I think, to your point a little bit, seeing that data without it being in context, it's sometimes hard to share, when we post that, to share the whole story behind that data on the slides that are posted. And so I think it was really helpful for me as an administrator to hear from those principals how their former staff reacted to that, and I just really want to take a moment again and thank them for their hard work. There was a ton of work done last year for those kids that we're really seeing the impacts of, whether that's behavior plans, it's mainly behavior plans, but those are schools who did amazing work last year, and we've had so much success because there was such great communication about that student's behavior plan when they got to their new school. So I don't know if that's where you were going, but I took it there anyways, because I just want to thank those teachers again.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, so I am going to make a motion that is a bit amended to 15 minutes to see if we can move to this executive session, move through it a little bit quicker. Is that okay with you? Okay. I move to recess, to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of individuals to be discussed, with Dr. Anthony Lewis invited to be present, and with the board to return to open session in this room at 10:30 with no action to follow.
Second.
Jones?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Kadu Blackwood?
Yes.
Costello?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
And we've had so much success because there was such great communication about that student's behavior plan when they got to their new school. So I don't know if that's where you were going, but I took it there anyways because I just want to thank those teachers again.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, so I am going to make a motion that is a bit amended to 15 minutes to see if we can move to this executive session, move through it a little bit quicker. Is that okay with you? Okay. I move to recess to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of individuals to be discussed with Dr. Anthony Lewis invited to be present and with the board to return to open session in this room at 10:30 with no action to follow. Jones?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
Kimball? Kuduh Blackwood?
Yes.
Costello?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. I move to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor?